Does anyone have an extra pen? Mine just died.
Yeah.
And it's two o'clock. Good timing. Okay. All right. Call the meeting to order for Monday, March 21st, 2022. We have the beginning of the meeting. We have five members of council, four members of, good math, four members of council in chambers, Councilor Killig, Councilor Mackay, and Councilor Braddan, myself, and Councilor Jolly, Bermanzky, and Hughes are on Zoom, so 100% attendance. Motion, I have no changes to the agenda. Does anyone else have any changes? Oh, I'm looking. You're good. All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Go ahead.
That the March 21st, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
All right. Call for the vote.
Excuse me, Mayor Heron.
Oh, sorry.
I did send an email through to remove an item from consent.
Yeah, we're not on consent agenda yet. We're just approving the.
Okay.
All right. So the vote's in. We need your vote, Councilor Bermanzky. Put it in the chat so we can record it. All right, voting's closed. Not some sure unanimous. Thank you. All right. We have presentations, delegations, and announcements. So we do have some registered speakers. I'm just seeing who's online here. So we've got Matt Backer, which was going to speak to us from Active Communities Alberta, but he'd sent me a quick email saying that something came up at work and he would reschedule. So he will not be here today. We have Mariah Joe, who wants to speak to us about a Ukrainian fundraiser. And I also have Chris Schaefer from Bird Canada registered to speak. So is Chris with us?
I'm present, Mayor.
Great. Chris, I know you want to speak to the eScooter motion. It's probably not going to get to us for quite a while. I'd like to give people the opportunity to speak now, or you can wait till we get to that agenda item. So what would your preference be?
I'm happy to wait until the agenda item is, but I'm at your at the will of council.
Okay. If you don't mind waiting, then I'm fine with that. We'll just, if you have to log off or something, maybe send a quick message in the chat and we can get you in then. But Mary Jo, there is no agenda item under your topic, so I'm going to let you go ahead now. Are you with us?
Hi there. Yes, I am.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. So you have five minutes to speak. And so why don't you go ahead? And then I'm sure council might have some questions for you.
Great. I just shared my screen. Let me know if you guys can see it. Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, Mayor Heron and City Council members. My name is Mariah Joe Brecknerich. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate being added to the schedule on such short notice. Before I begin, I'd like to note that everyone I've dealt with at the city for this project has been incredibly helpful, especially Terry at the Arden and the people in Legislative Services. Apology if my voice fades. I got COVID last week, so I'm still fighting the lingering symptoms. I speak to you today with the humble request for some of the fees to be donated by the City of St. Albert for a night for Ukraine being held at the Arden Theater on April 19th. A night for Ukraine will be a night devoted to Ukrainian dance and culture with, hopefully, if my request is granted, over 95% of the proceeds going directly to the Canada-Ukraine Foundation Humanitarian Appeal. This event
Does anyone have an extra pen? Mine just died. And it's two o'clock. Good timing. Okay. All right, call the meeting to order for Monday, March 21st, 2022. We have, at the beginning of the meeting, we have five members of council, four members, good math, four members of council in chambers, Council Killick, Council Mackay, and Council Broadhead and myself, and Council Jolly, Brumansky, and Hughes are on Zoom, so 100% attendance. Motion, I have no changes to the agenda. Does anyone else have any changes? Oh, I'm looking. You're good? All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Go ahead.
That the March 21st, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
All right, call for the vote.
Excuse me, Mayor Heron.
Oh, sorry.
I did send an email through to remove an item from consent.
Yeah, we're not on consent agenda yet. We're just approving the. All right, so the vote's in? We need your vote, Council Brumansky. Put it in the chat, so we can record it. All right, voting's closed, and not some sure unanimous. Thank you. All right, we have presentations, delegations, and announcements. So we do have some registered speakers. I'm just seeing who's online here. So we've got Matt Backer, which was going to speak to us from Active Communities Alberta, but he'd sent me a quick email saying that something came up at work and he would reschedule. So he will not be here today. We would have Mariah Joe, who wants to speak to us about a Ukrainian fundraiser. And I also have Chris Schaefer from Bird Canada registered to speak. So is Chris with us?
I'm present, Mayor.
Great, Chris, I'm gonna, I know you want to speak to the e-scooter motion. It's probably not going to get to us for quite a while. I'd like to give people the opportunity to speak now, or you can wait till we get to that agenda item. So what would your preference be?
I'm happy to wait until the agenda item is, but I'm at your at the will of council.
Okay, if you don't mind waiting, then then I'm fine with that. I will just, if you have to log off or something, maybe send a quick message in the chat and we can get you in then. But Mary Jo, there is no agenda item under your topic, so I'm gonna let you go ahead now. Are you with us?
Hi there. Yes, I am.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So you have five minutes to speak, and so why don't you go ahead? And then I'm sure council might have some questions for you.
Great. I just shared my screen. Let me know if you guys can see it. Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, Mayor Heron and City Council members. My name is Mariah Joe Brecknerich. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate being added to the schedule on such short notice. Before I begin, I'd like to note that everyone I've dealt with at the city for this project has been incredibly helpful, especially Terry at the Arden and the people in Legislative Services. Apology if my voice fades. I got COVID last week, so I'm still fighting the lingering symptoms. I speak to you today with the humble request for some of the fees to be donated by the City of St. Albert for a Night for Ukraine being held at the Arden Theater on April 19th. A Night for Ukraine will be a night devoted to Ukrainian dance and culture with, hopefully, if my request is granted, over 95% of the proceeds going directly to the Canada-Ukraine Foundation Humanitarian Appeal. This event is the first time in history, all six of these groups from Edmonton have performed together, bringing over 100 Canadian-Ukrainian artists to the stage. I understand this is a large ask of the city, but I believe all of you are aware of the devastating crisis in Europe and how hard it has hit communities in Alberta that are so interconnected with Ukraine. Almost 10% of the population in Alberta is of Ukrainian descent. I am second generation Ukrainian-Canadian, so the events in Ukraine have been surreal and personally heartbreaking. With the help of the great staff of the City of St. Albert, outlined here is a detailed cost breakdown of what fees will reduce the amount we are able to donate to the humanitarian appeal. The left side of the slide lists all the fees totaling over $10,500. The largest fees that would reduce the percent of the revenue donated from approximately 95% to 80% are the booking fee, and specifically the facility fee, which is 10% of the ticket price. We chose to make tickets to this event quite expensive, $125 per seat, because raising money for the crisis is our primary goal. And due to the historic nature of the event and the size of the Ukrainian community, we know it will sell out at this price. But by charging a large amount to the attendee, this increases the facility fees dramatically, totaling almost $10,000. Despite the crisis, we understand you have a city to run and you must be economical. So I've targeted the request on the right side of the screen to those two of the largest fees. Although any donation agreed by council is greatly appreciated, and we understand if this is also not possible. Although I know it is likely the humanitarian crisis is enough persuasion, we would be very happy to have this event sponsored by the City of St. Albert if my request is granted. Apologies for the quality of the City of St. Albert logo on the right-hand side. I found it online, just to give you guys an idea. For those who aren't overly familiar with the Ukrainian community, the Ukrainian dance actually has a massive following in North America. And what I started as a small project to raise money has received support I'd never imagined. Several large groups with significant online presence have promoted our event, and in one week has almost 700 attendees on Facebook. We expect tickets to sell out very quickly. On Thursday, we will be announcing a live stream option filmed and donated by Production World, where 100% of the $20 tickets will be donated to the humanitarian appeal. This can be watched from anywhere, so international exposure is expected and would be exciting for the city. We've chosen the Canada-Ukrainian Foundation Humanitarian Appeal because it is a Canadian foundation with direct connections to Ukraine, ensuring the donations will translate into aid in the most efficient manner possible. Thank you, Mayor Heron and City Council members, for your time and consideration. I would now be happy to answer any of your questions or await any comments. I can also go back to the specific funding slide.
Well, thank you so much, Mariah. So process-wise, I just want, so you're understanding the next part of the agenda would allow council, I'm sure there will be some questions of you. And then the next part of the agenda is called Business arising from presentations. And so if a council member wants to ask our staff any particular questions, then that would be the chance for you to ask staff or even potentially make a motion today. So I'm gonna open up the floor for questions. I just need to see the participants, so I can see if they have their hands up. I see Council Jolly has her hand up already, so go ahead, Natalie.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I'm actually more Ukrainian than I am French, so I definitely know where you're coming from. My question is about the timings. So are you having to kind of front the booking fee right away? Or, you know, if this, this, the 7,200 was covered by council by the 19th, is that kind of the timeline that you're looking at?
So I started this project with a budget of zero, because it is just me. And the Arden has been really helpful, and how it works, they explained to me for a nonprofit fundraiser, is they collect all of the ticket costs, and then they just minus their costs at the end from the total amount that we raise. And then I've already provided them all the contact details for the foundation, so they're gonna send the check directly to the foundation with whatever is left once their costs are covered.
Fantastic. That is good to hear. So April 19th kind of gives us a lot of time. Certainly, if no one else, I'm, yeah, I'm prepared to bring forward a notice of motion. I just don't know where the funds would come from. So those will be kind of questions that we can ask administration later on.
And Council Jolly, just so you know, I did ask ledge to prepare a wave of notice motion and some wording if we wanted to do something today, and there's lots of questions.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Are you having a problem with your button?
No, I was gonna ask a question, but then I figured, I just wanted to say thank you very much for presenting. And the question I was gonna actually have is probably more appropriate.
For administration?
Administration. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, and I really hope that you get healthy.
It sounds like.
Before April 19th anyways, because I think you're gonna need your voice before then.
Yeah, and I just actually looked at the calendar, and we have a council meeting on the 19th. So I don't know if council is even gonna be able to attend, but maybe virtually. So I see a couple heads up. Go ahead, Council Hughes, and then I'll go to you, Council Killick.
Thanks. So if, let's, let's assume that you sold out the 550 seats. What are you, if you did not get the funding from the city for the 7,200, what would you expect to have as a donation to the cause then?
Really, any, any of the fees would be ideal. There, I listed on that slide, there's, there's quite a number of them. Also, if a smaller donation is more appropriate, the debit and credit fees, which are 5% of every ticket price, is $2,500. Just because the Arden is collecting all of these funds for us, it would be easiest for them to just not have to minus one fee and then just send the one check to the the foundation directly.
Right. Now, what I'm wondering is, assuming you sold out the venue, and you didn't get any subsidy from the city, what are you expecting your net donation to be to this, this charity?
Yeah, sorry. So the total amount from the ticket prices is gonna be about $63,000. So if we have to pay for all of the approximately $10,000 fees, it would be about $52,000. That's including the, the in, the actual seats for the live stream. We aren't sure how many people are gonna do it. We're estimating about a couple hundred. So about 100% of those proceeds, because there won't be any costs for that.
Okay. So, so even without any city support, you're still expecting to be able to donate over $50,000 if, if it sells out? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Council Killick.
Yes, thank you. Two weeks ago, we were all very proud to wear yellow and blue in support of Ukraine. And this is a great opportunity to actually put some dollars behind that. So I applaud you for bringing this forward at, at a time when many of us kind of feel helpless to support. What, the registered charity, I'm really glad to see it is a registered charity. Could you explain just a little bit of how much money of that charity stays in Canada? Or does it all go to kind of relief efforts? What are some of the main focuses of that charity?
So you can decide, you can inform them specifically what you want your donation to go to, and the humanitarian appeal that they've specifically opened just for Ukraine, 100% of those proceeds are going. The Board of Directors for this foundation is all volunteer, and they do get funding for other things to have the foundation running, like it's, it's kind of like a long time-running council. So if you donate directly to the humanitarian appeal, it all goes to that aid. And I'm in conversations with the foundation now to find out specifically what our money could go for. And so we'd be able to provide that information to the attendees, hopefully the night of.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead, Council Mackay.
I just have a follow-up question, and, and I won't take you long, because I realize the stress this is putting on your voice. If, I mean, I imagine, like you've anticipated, this will be sold out, and I anticipate this to be extraordinarily popular as well. And I could see it maybe being duplicated and all that. Would there be a, perhaps, a second? I mean, you know, you see sometimes you have, where you have the one, one event, and then, of course, now you've got two or three. And I realize that on the different companies performing, there may be some time commitments, but do you anticipate that you will have other fundraising events if, based on the success of this one?
There was a lot of talk of that, but I was in Chedamosh for 18 years, so I'm like, got pretty close contacts with all of the dance groups. And unfortunately, Shumka and Chedamosh, or the two biggest groups, are actually doing a cross-Canada tour over the next few months. So they aren't able to provide any additional dates at this time. Coming up in May is also the, the U-Fest. It's a big Ukrainian festival. And then in the summertime, they've got Vagerville and then Dauphin. So it's getting into the really busy season. So at this point in time, and I'm definitely not planning more than this one. So no, there, it's gonna be this one date, and hopefully the live stream option will allow more people to join.
Yeah, I just want to say final, congratulations on all your efforts and organizing. Appreciate it. And I, unlike, I'm not Ukrainian, and no part of me is Ukrainian, although I used to listen to the Ukrainian hour on CFCW, because I was trapped in a vehicle with my father, who only wanted to listen to that. So I'm sure I absorbed some of it.
I see no more questions. But Mariah, I'm gonna encourage you to stick around, because I did hear from council members that they have some questions of staff. So we're gonna go to questions of staff now. So throw your hand up if you have a question for our staff. Got Elizabeth chiming in. I thought somebody had one. Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under circumstances like this, where we have a compelling sort of charitable request, is there a policy structure that would allow us to do what is being asked?
So through policy, the admin, the, the fees of the Arden are set by administration. However, we don't really have a waiving mechanism within the admin directive or council policy admin. So we had asked council to make that determination. We'd be able to either do that through, take it as a, an event that we take it as a loss and, and make that up over the year, at the year-end, when we reconcile the budget. Or the other option would be through council contingency or the stabilization. And would you guys have that, that ability to waive the fee for a event when it comes to these circumstances?
Okay, fair enough. So there's a couple of options there. Recommendation, either funding source, council contingency, or stabilization?
Either, either one, but I can let Diane talk a bit more specific to those.
If we were gonna take it from, from a reserve or a current budget, I wouldn't actually recommend council contingency, because we have a motion on the floor today that would actually bring that balance lower than what's being requested through this. I would like to find us a way in some ways to keep the revenue for the Arden pure, potentially, you know, by moving it through another funding source, just because, you know, as we report on Arden activities and stuff, you know, we don't want that to be sort of a variable.
Stabilization?
So stabilization, I would say, would probably be the best option, and we'll have to figure out the accounting behind that.
Yeah, it's just finding a way to make this happen according to our policy, that's all. Thank you.
Council Jolly.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. The first, I'm curious to know what the proposed motion is that Admin's prepared for today.
I don't think administration actually prepared a.
Pardon?
I don't think administration prepared a motion.
I thought we were gonna get.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Cheryl's just written it down. Do you want me to read that out?
It's in the chat. We don't put it in the chat, because no one else can see it. So.
I can read it. It says that the Arden Theater fees be waived for the, a Night for Ukraine event scheduled for April 19th to be allocated from the council stabilization reserve. Great. Thank you. I mean, I guess a follow-up to that question. Is there, like, could we fund this through the community event grant? I know that that's been barely touched over the last couple of years.
I see Elizabeth. I don't know who wants to answer that one.
You know, I, I'm not sure how the application, allocation works on the community services event grant, but it could, it could very well be one. So I'm not sure if Diane Anger, if she'd like to speak to that.
I like that idea.
Good morning, Councilor Jolly. So I think to, to Mr. Hilt's point, we'd have to look at the event criteria and determine whether or not it would fit within that. We usually don't waive fees as, well, actually, to take that back, we have at times given the event the funding, and then they've chosen to use that wherever they, they best found that it would support their event. We could take that away and take a look at that. Danielle, do you have the timing of when the event grant is coming forward?
I could touch base and just confirm that and get back to you in a couple of minutes. We just hang tight.
Well, I guess just, okay, just to follow up to that question, when we had the, I think it was a workshop on grants, is this the type of kind of flexibility that, that you were alluding to? When we were saying a different model would maybe allow the flexibility, say, to, to consider this request without, you know, 40 staff in a room at the council level?
Yes, through the chair, Council Jolly, that is exactly what we were looking at with bringing forward those changes to the granting program, providing some flexibility, so that when there are one-offs like this, it could be CAO's discretion.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, any, Council Hughes.
Thank you. So now, look at the motion. It doesn't have a dollar amount, and it should have a dollar amount or an up to amount. So when it says waiving the fees, is that the 1,800, or is that suggesting the full 72? Or is that sending you 2 plus whatever credit card fees?
75.
What was? All right, and go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, that was me interrupting. It's $7,502 that they're requesting up to.
So is that motion to reflect that, or is it to reflect just the booking fees?
We can put a number in the motion. If, if there is a motion, yeah.
I guess I'm just asking, what is the number amount that we were intending with that? Is it the, the full amount?
I think it's really up to us, Council Hughes, not staff.
The other question I had is, if it, if it is the full amount, the 7,562, have we ever donated that much money to an event before? I don't remember ever donating that much money to an event, and I could be wrong. I'm just trying to just put a perspective into it. So if people are wondering, would it be more through the community events grants, right? That that would have had more than that amount?
I think they cap 5,000, except for some of the grandfathered ones, like the fireworks and stuff get more.
So in a, on a, if they, under our current policies for a community event, the, the amount would be $5,000 if they had applied through regular channels and regular timelines. Is that correct? The maximum amount?
But I'm, it's been a while.
Through the chair, Council Hughes, I will ask Danielle if she could step in, and just, can you give us an understanding of how much we have granted in the past for our events, please?
Absolutely. So the next intake for community events is April 7th, just as a reference for council and members around the table. Typically, funding for ad hoc events is noted in the grant policy that will not, not normally exceed $5,000. So there are some criteria of eligibility for the event, and it's all noted online, and I can pass the line to whomever might be most relevant for that, for sure.
Okay. So even if we were just to waive the criteria and just say, because it's this special situation, normally the maximum would be five grand. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, I see no more hands up. I will, now, I guess, since there are questions, entertain it if anyone wants to either make a notice of motion or waive notice and do something tonight. Council Jolly?
I, I mean, if, if council would, would accept it, I, I would propose a motion to waive notice and then have a motion to waive the fees up to the amount specified.
Okay, I think we need to have the exact motion on the floor before we decide what we're waiving.
Sure, I can read it out if you'd like.
Oh, I'm hearing. So I love that you guys are using Zoom so much. We cannot read that, and none of. We cannot read that and none of, I'm the only one on Zoom, so I don't know. We used to have to be able to put motions on the screen. Is it because of Zooms on the screen? Like, let's just take Zoom off the screen. There we go. Maybe that works. Pardon?
So, Mayor Heron, if I, if I may, just to clarify, this isn't a case where you need a notice and motion or to waive notice.
You don't need to waive notice?
It arises out of an item you've already discussed on the agenda. This, this, uh, individual has been invited to address this. So it, it just flows naturally out of something you've already been discussing.
I do believe we would need no, a wave of notice though, because if a certain member is not ready to debate it today.
Uh, well, if, if, if I'm saying you don't need a waiver of notice, if someone's not ready to debate it, the way to do that under the procedure by law would be move to table it.
Okay.
So that they can debate it when they are ready.
Okay. All right. So Counsel Jolly, can you read into the record for the public and everyone, your exact reading of the motion you want to put forward?
Sure, thank you. That the Arden Theatre fees be waived up to seven thousand five hundred and two dollars for the A Night for Ukraine event scheduled for April nineteen, twenty twenty-two, to be allocated from the community events grant, if possible, within the policy mandate. Otherwise, the council stabilization reserve. I hope that's okay with Diane.
So essentially, you're saying your preference would be for the money to come from community events? And, uh, if not, then stabilization. So we'll, we'll grant them the money and we'll figure out where it comes from later. All right, um, I see no hands up or questions about your motion. So, oh, go ahead, Counsel Mackay.
Um, I'm just confused in relation to the events grant and, and the number that's out there. I mean, I, I'm, staff had said April seventh, they're meeting. Um, and there's a number of, probably a number of applications in relation. So they're going to meet to discuss April seventh, community events grant? Or is it just C S A C that's meeting? Sorry.
I think it's C S A C. When is, when is C S A C meeting next? Why is everyone so quiet?
Um, through the chair. Um, so I think Danielle was just looking that up. April seventh is when I think the grant deadline is. And then it will go to C S A C, so it'll probably be at C S A C end of April. And then in front of council after that. And to, um, Counsel Mackay's points, uh, we are just looking at all of the grant applications coming in. And so, um, we, we're not sure how many we will, we will get this year. So, um, unable to, you know, sort of say whether or not there's enough funding in there to, uh, I guess, look at all those that may come in as well as this one as well. And normally, we don't, through the event grant, um, necessarily fund fundraising. Um, but we do fund events and then they use those dollars where appropriate. But not so much for fundraising, but for the delivery of the event.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I'm looking at. I mean, it, I mean, I don't know whether it would meet the criteria of the community events grant. So, I mean, so.
No, we're just, we're not, I, I, sorry, I think.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, it says within the possible.
Yeah.
Honestly, I just want that pool of money. I don't even care if it confines the policy and I, but your, but Counsel Jolly, your motion actually confines it to the policy.
I, I could remove that. I can say if, if recommended by the C S A C.
Yeah, well, that was my concern because, I mean, we, we say under the policy mandate, so.
Yeah. I, I, that's, that's friendly to change it to if recommended by C S A C. And I'm also, also okay with stabilization reserve if they don't.
Yeah, if they're going, if C S A C is going to agree to this reducing their pot of money, then we need to have a meeting and they don't have a meeting until the end of April. So that's not going to work.
I just think it's cleaner if we just say.
I just say, take it from the community events grant. This, we can make that call. It's up to you, Counsel Jolly. But within the policy mandate, kind of puts it back onto the staff to decide if this fits. Like, what if, if it fits, because we haven't changed it to allow that flexibility yet. So where do you want the money coming from is my question to you.
I want it from the community events grant.
Okay, so just take out, um, allocated for community grants, comma, other, yeah, just period and then take away the rest. How about that?
Yep.
Okay. Sound good? Everybody's good. Poor Mariah. Just got to do the right process.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you.
We're just giving the alleged staff of Sec to do this. Okay. It's a good process to bat it back and forth amongst ourselves. All right, Counsel Bermansky.
I just had one question. If the grant is approved for the five thousand dollar maximum, would that mean that the other twenty-five hundred would have to come from the stabilization or whatever area as well?
No, we're taking it out of the grant policy and just taking the seventy-five, two dollars, uh, straight out of this pot of money that we have set aside for community events. So it's not, it's regardless of policy, because policy does say five thousand, but we're just- Regardless of policy, this is where the money's coming from. Does that make sense?
Um, so we are applying for a grant, but changing the maximum is what you're saying?
No, we're not applying for grant. Council is making a decision without a grant application. And it's for seven thousand five hundred and two dollars. And the question now is what pot of money it comes from? And Counsel Jolly's motion says community events grant, which is that, what do we have in that for community events? Do you remember? It's based on population or something. Like, don't worry about, don't worry about. Does that, does that help?
I still find it rather confusing, but I guess we'll see where it goes.
Okay. I'm seeing no more hands up. Got our questions out, feel comfortable. Counsel Jolly, I accept your motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I think council was really clear in our kind of horror, what's happening in Ukraine right now, um, a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, events like this really help the community come together and feel like we're doing something to help. Um, so I, I really appreciate that we have community members stepping up like this. I know yesterday at Taste of Ukraine, the lineups were just wild trying to get, buy pierogies for, for a fundraiser as well. So I know this is something that's, that's really important to our community. Um, I would also add that, uh, I, I think it, it's, it's unfortunate that this had to come to a council level. I think absolutely we could develop policy that would allow, um, groups like this to, to, uh, request funding um, in a way that's a lot more flexible and straightforward, um, than, than this current process. So I really look forward to our, our changes in process for granting, um, various grants in the municipality. Um, in terms of which pot of money it's coming out of, um, I, I, I appreciate that our current policy is a little bit more restrictive, but I think the discussions that we've, we've been having are leading towards more flexible granting. And I think this is an indication that, um, we are willing to, to be flexible in, in how we allocate grants. Um, I think it's a reasonable ask, seventy-five hundred dollars is a reasonable ask to, to help the community feel like they are participating. Um, and, uh, and I, I would think, you know, uh, everyone trying to help out in this situation. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Jolly, for bringing the motion forward and, uh, and thanks for bringing the, uh, the event to council and asking for, for support. Uh, it is a tragedy, what's going on in, in Europe. And, and quite honestly, to watch the news every morning is, is a heartbreaking situation. And quite honestly, uh, for all of the, uh, issues that Canada faces, um, it sort of puts into perspective the, the issues that, that we face in Canada are, are minor in comparison to what other people are facing in this world. And the fact that we can, as a council, come alongside one of our, uh, residents and help support, uh, uh, another country in a, in a very dire situation, particularly because we have such a large, uh, Ukrainian ethnic, uh, community in, in the region. I is, I, I can't be prouder than to support this, quite honestly. And, uh, I, I don't really care where the money comes from. We just need to support it. And, uh, and given that council by right and by policy can make this decision, it's got my support, Madam Mayor.
Counsel Mackay?
Yeah, I'm just going to add my support because, I mean, I struggled with trying to figure out how I could support something that really is so far away, but really impacts us so close to home because of our, uh, our close ties with Ukraine and Ukrainian families. And, uh, I mean, per, on a personal level, I, I, you know, I, I, I thought ways that I could try and help. So as identified by Counsel Broadhead, I mean, this, this is something I think is really simple for the city to step up and do. I mean, on a personal note, my next door neighbor, it has close ties, um, with Ukraine and were able to get some of their family out. But the, um, husband and the other male members of the family were forced to stay in Ukraine because they were fighting for their freedoms. So for us to identify seven thousand five hundred and two dollars to help, uh, in some sort of, that's, that's really going to end up tripling, maybe quadrupling that month. And even now that I've heard that it's live streamed, I mean, now I know, like, if I can't get it, I mean, if we have a council meeting, I think we should pause it and now I've streamed some of our council meetings so we can actually watch it in chambers because, uh, uh, I think that's the, that's the least we can do. So I know, uh, you know, we, we sat here and discussed which pot comes up. That's procedural and honestly, it's the right thing to do and that's why we have to do it.
Thank you. Counsel Killick?
Very simply, uh, this is the right thing to do, something we should be very proud to do. I fully support it. Thank you.
I see no hands up, uh, at home, so I'll just add that, you know, this, we've had requests in the past to waive fees, um, from various groups. One of them came from my own Rotary Club and I said no to them because we do have to have policy and, and some guidelines. But this is, and, and, you know, there was some word that this would be precedent setting, betting other groups would be coming and asking for the waiving of fees. But I, honestly, when was the last time we've actually been this close to, um, a, a war, World War Three? Yeah, I, I don't want to go that far, but, um, and, and it's been said by all of you that we have so many Ukrainian ties here in, in Alberta, but also all of Alberta. Um, and this is just unprecedented, so I don't think we're setting a precedent. Does that make sense? When we do something, I guess I'll absolutely have my hundred percent support. That's why I was making sure motions were ready in case one of you was wanting to do it. Otherwise, I was going to hand over the chair and do it myself. So, um, Counsel Jolly, for you to close.
Thank you. And, and I would just add that I agree this is unprecedented. I'm usually a stickler for policy, probably to a fault. Um, but I think that gets thrown out the window when children are dying. So, um, Mariah, I really, Mariah Jo, I really appreciate you coming to address this today. I think this is a great event. I appreciate why you wouldn't want to, to organize a second one, because I know it is so much work to, to organize something like this. So thank you again for your, for your work. That's all I have.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. There you go, Mariah Jo, good, you know, and actually, we said that it might be easier to have flexibility in the future and I hope we do, but hopefully this, this last half hour of conversation, um, has sparked some, because it's broadcast publicly, has, has, you know, brought some attention to your fundraiser. So good luck with it. Uh, hopefully, we're done by seven o'clock on April nineteenth. And if you, if you want anything from myself or council on the night of, just bring greetings. Uh, we'll happily make that happen.
Thank you all so much. I really, really appreciate this.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Did you see I'm dancing?
You, you could do it, but if, if I ever had to get down in a crouch like that, I would.
Exactly. All right, let's, uh, what is next on our agenda? We have a public hearing at three, so, oh, consent agenda, sorry. Uh, we only really have the minutes, uh, on consent. So we can either just skip consent agenda and approve the minutes or we can do consent. Why don't we just go straight to the minutes? Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the, thank, you want to do that, Wes? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that the regular council minutes of March the seventh of twenty twenty-two be adopted as presented.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that's unanimous. All right, eight point one is, uh, the Standing Committee Evaluation Methodology. So we have about twenty minutes before the public hearing. Um, I hope we can get this done in twenty minutes. I'll just ask members of council that this is not a debate about the standing committees at all. And let's, I want to really test your level of governance and stay on topic. So any, any debate around this committee is bad or that committee is not good, we're working or not working is, that's not what we're talking about today. Uh, this is about a methodology. And I, I'm glad we're trying to make our decision on the standing committees based on some data and some fact and, and a defined methodology, but let's try to keep our conversation on task. So I'll open it up to you, Mr. LaFleur. And, uh, do you have a quick presentation or a long presentation?
Uh, I just want to be sure that everything's working correctly here. Everyone can hear me?
Um, you might have to get a little closer to the mic.
Can everyone hear me in the chamber and, and at home?
Yeah, I'm seeing nods, so you're good.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm not good at making those, but I, what I try to do is make up for it with hopefully relatively clear council reports. So the, the only thing I'll say, I mean, you've all had the opportunity to read it. Uh, the, the key thing that I tried to accomplish here, and by the way, I say I, I want to acknowledge the tremendous help of Victoria Petrov from Strategic Services, who, who really had, had some excellent insights and also created the matrix format, which I wouldn't have been able to do. So thank you very much, Victoria, if you're listening. So what we've tried to do here is make sure that the evaluation matrix is as objective as possible. That's the one thing I would like to underscore in the report. You know, you can, you can look at a, at a task like this, evaluating a governance methodology, and you can be totally objective. You can just base it on gut feel, if that's what you want to do. And if you do want to do that, I'm not saying that's wrong, okay? But when I looked at section twenty-two of the bylaws, I looked at that and I saw this is a council that wants to put some objectivity into this process. And so with that in mind, we tried to come up with a series of questions. As you can see, we kind of grouped them, questions that go to the relevance of the committees and questions that go to the performance of the committees. And then at the very end, and I'll thank Mr. Hiltz for this, who felt that when you've gone through all the questions, you need to ask yourself the ultimate question. Are these committees meeting your expectations? And if the answer is no, could they? Could they with changes? And so our feeling as administration was that if you work your way through the matrix, the questions, um, give whatever weight you want to the questions. It's not, it's not something we're going to be prescriptive about or suggest a particular weighting. Uh, when you work your way through and ask all those questions, hopefully you'll have a better idea of how you think you should vote. And that's really all this is intended to do. It's to help guide you, make a decision on whether this particular governance model is serving your needs or not. So other than that, unless there are any questions, that's my only comments.
All right, I already see, uh, Counsel Hughes's hand up and then I'll go to Wes and Mike.
Yeah, um, hi, Mr. LaFleur. How you doing? Um, the, the one feedback that I have on this is that it's, it like, there's, there's, there's more than one option. There's a standing committee that's divided. There was a standing committee, the whole, where everybody was attending at the same time and had equal vote. So, um, and then there's other models as well that haven't been considered. So, uh, um, my concern when I'm reading this is that it, it seems to be like, do you think this is doing it? But it's sort of like this or nothing, as if we didn't have a standing committee prior to splitting the two separate subcommittees. So, um, I guess how is that? How can it be conveyed there? Because that's the challenge I'm having right now, is it's sort of like this or nothing? And the councils that haven't been on before may not be aware that there was a standing committee of the whole prior to this or considering that model or any other model. So I guess how, how are we clarifying that if this isn't an all or nothing? And if we don't have the two committees, that there's still another option for other alternatives? And that there has always been a committee model in some way, shape or form?
So if I may through the chair, I think there, there might be a couple of questions in the model that would be a springboard to that kind of discussion. I'm thinking of questions P3 and P4, basically asking, you know, how does this compare with a model that some of you knew before, which is the Governance, Priorities and Finance Committee? And then even if you weren't on council at that time, or, you know, do you think it's, it's led to more informed decisions that would have been the case if all matters went directly to council, which is another model? But that is, of course, potentially a springboard to, are there other models, right? And there's no, and, and honestly, through the chair to, to councillor councillor Hughes, we did say in the alternative section, if there are other questions that are more, that are pertinent and applicable, they can be added. So you could certainly, it would be open to you councillor to add to the matrix, a question exactly as you posted, are there other governance models that might be better than the committee structure as we know it now? That's a perfectly legitimate question in evaluating. So if you would want to add that, that's fine. We just tried to, we had to start somewhere, right? We had to start somewhere, so.
Yeah, you called this a springboard.
So you're asking us to approve these questions today, or can you take what we have as feedback and then just simply make some modifications that are having to go back and forth? I don't want to have to wordsmith the questions. I'm just, is it possible that we can just say, take this plus any feedback and then come back with a final model? I realize this is a guidance thing, so I don't want to have this be like all day event of us trying to figure out additional questions. And the other thing before you answer that is just perhaps if we just had a paragraph that you, the history of how the, like, you know, we've had a different committees, this is how the committee structure was, this is, it changed from, there's like a committee on finance, and we had the whole, and then it went to this. Just even if it's just a quick paragraph, just so that it refreshes everyone, especially the new people. Just so that they're aware of where it was if they didn't live through it. And then they can see what it is, because right now, some people, this is all they know. So I'm just wondering, like, we could just add that, but can you just take, is it possible taking the feedback we have and there's if you think that there's something that's valid to put in there, then we just add a question or not? I don't really want to make this an all day event, like this.
So through the chair to councillor Hughes, we can do whatever council wishes. I just want everyone to bear in mind that the, the bylaw, section 22 of the bylaw says that you're going to adopt an evaluation matrix by the end of March. So if council wanted to do something different, wanted to take more time to refine this, it would require a separate motion to do that.
Okay. Well, if it's possible, you could at least just provide.
So councillor Hughes, say that again.
Just if they could provide a brief history, before you begin the questions, just say, here's the history of the committee structure before, like 2012, it was this, 2014, it switched to this, 2017, it switched to this. 2019, it switched to this.
Right through the chair, when this comes back to council for an actual decision in June, we can put all that background in an AR at that time. That should be no problem.
Yeah, there's a whole section of our agenda that speaks to the history.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I actually don't oppose the idea of adding questions either. And if an extra motion is required, we can make that. I don't know whether it's a two week delay or whatever, but my question actually follows on to that. Is there, I, I recognize that this is council doing a review and evaluation of the, of the framework and, and the governance models here. But is there an opportunity to get feedback from administration? How do they view it? I, I recognize that the decision rests with council, but, but it would be nice if we had, I'm not sure that's the word, helpful, would be better, I suspect. Just to, to understand whether the you know, the committee structure as it stands actually works for administration. It would just be helpful if there is some sort of feedback in that regard.
So, so through the chair, if I, if I may to councillor Broadhead, that you basically essentially proposed another very relevant question to be asked as part of the matrix. So what council could do, if, if they were generally, if you're generally happy with the matrix, but would like to fine tune it, you could take the motion that we're recommending and then add to the end with the addition of the following questions.
Can't we just?
You could do that.
Can't we just submit this maybe very similar list of questions to administration?
You can do that as well. It's really, it's really your thing, right? We're, we're just trying to give you something to get started to discuss.
I like the questions. I really do. I also understand councillor Hughes's perspective about, you know, does this work or is it better? Did we have something better in the past? Yep. So anyway, that's my question.
Councillor Killick?
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur, for putting the matrix together. I would note that P8 had the comment about does this improve relationship with city administration? So I think we've kind of, you had addressed that part in there almost. It's, it's a question. It wasn't fleshed out with any other detail to it, but at least it was noted as, as something that we should look at. The one I, I, I'm just trying to figure out how, as a new councillor, P3 really relies heavily on previous councils' knowledge of the past structure. And to have my input in a, in a the, the same weighting, I guess, how, how would that be achieved as a new councillor without that past experience? Would it be through weighting or what? How would you envision that? Both of the new councillors would have kind of the equal input to, to that particular section?
So through the chair, this obviously was intended to, to, to be a question primarily for those who have had experience on the previous council. However, there are many people, and I would suggest councillor Killick, you're probably one of them, who have quite a lot of experience with this council from the outside. So that's a question that, that if a council member, one of the two new council members feels, I should, I should answer that question as well. I see no problem with that, because presumably, you know, you had a lot of interest in council or you wouldn't have run. So you probably have a view, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Yep, thank you. The other part was, just so I'm clear, we're, if we lock in on, on this framework, how, how do we change it if we wanted to add a couple more questions before? Because the, the bylaw says we have a matrix by the end of the month. You've developed the matrix. How, how do we actually input? Do we have to go through a whole council motion, or can we send to other councillors maybe two or three other questions that we would like to have included when we actually go into debate in June?
Okay, so if I may, there are two possibilities that occur to me. You could do this, you know, the standard method, serve a notice of motion and debate it at some future time prior to June. Or you could tweak the motion to say that we're going to adopt this matrix together with such other questions as any councillor may suggest. And, and set a deadline, right? You don't want to wait till the end of June, but, but, you know, by, say, the end of April or something. Give yourselves lots of time to, to add other questions that you think might be relevant. And then that's built into your motion, so then the, the matrix has built in flexibility if any councillor wants to add further questions. That would be the way I would recommend to do it.
Yeah, I, I like that clarification. I think that's, this is a great starting point and you know, having first looked at it in, you know, three or four days ago, it, it was helped, helped get the ideas flowing, but I think we need a little bit more time to have some of our input to it before we kind of just lock in and say that's it.
All right, councillor Mamski, and then councillor Mackay.
Through the mayor to administration, the one issue I have with this document is, you know, the questions are all regarding standing committee. But if it was a standing committee, you know, I attend all of the committees because I want to know what's going on, but if I had a vote at the committee, I'd be answering yes in some circumstances instead of no. So the committee is not really the question, it's what, what our input in the committee is. So I feel like a lot of these questions are not relative to the root of what we're really discussing.
Sorry, councillor Mamski. Are you proposing another question?
Well, I mean, the que, the questions here, they're, they're all asking about the committees and how effective they are. Well, if I have a vote on the committee, I would see it as more effective as if I don't have a vote on the committee. So being that we're split in the committees, I would answer differently if the committee was, you know, all seven of us voting rather than, than four voting.
Which, which was the old standing committee of the whole, so that's the comparison.
Right. But I can't answer these questions, you know, as how the actual committee is when I've never seen that side of it.
Yeah, they're, they're in lies, I've got the problem. I totally agree with you. No further questions? Okay, all right. Councillor Mackay?
Yeah, I'll be quick looking at the time here, but I, I, I mean, maybe more of a comment, but I mean, I reckon that in response to and I'm not going to be in debate. But I mean, from listening, it was always my intention, when I looked at it, I saw these, the framework, the evaluation matrix is just a guideline.
Yeah.
Just would form some of my responses. And the openness of several of the questions allowed a lot of flexibility that I could actually work through and wouldn't need an additional questions. I would just provide the additional commentary as, even as potentially what some of the previous comments have been. So and I, I recognize the challenge that new members of council have around this. But I mean, speaking to that, I mean, you know, even responding, I mean, you can, you can obviously be able to say, I wish I would change it back to this way, because then I have a vote on everything that came to council.
You do have a vote of everything that comes to council?
Yeah, but that's how you would respond, right? That's how you'd respond. And it would, my expectation that we would always have a set review period and we could actually put that in, in a bylaw, that we would review all of our standing committees as part of the procedural bylaw or something like that. Every term we would do that, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, I mean, they're always there. So I, I, I didn't see any need to actually fool around with the matrix that was presented and I, I appreciate you putting that in. I mean, because, I mean, obviously you allowed the flexibility, because it's a subjective document. You can pretty much write anything you want in there in response. So, but you know, so I, I'm sounding like I'm in debate and the question in the comment was, is around that, because I mean, certainly that was what's in the alternative or the considered. So I mean, I mean, I don't, I honestly don't know.
Yeah, okay, I know.
I mean, I, I, my questions were answered, so I had my finger on the buttons.
Okay, yeah. All right, it's, I don't think we're gonna, unless somebody wants to put a motion on the floor right now, which I'd be fine with, I think we might need to take a three minute break. Does anyone want to come? Councillor Broadhead, you want to put the motion on the floor?
Well, I would. I'd like to have just some extra wording there, just to encapsulate what councillor Hughes and I were talking about. So I don't know if, if councillor Mackay is, is right in that we can just read into the questions and fill it in as we see fit? Is, is that?
Okay, if, if I may through the, through the chair, there is a comment, maybe I shouldn't have buried it in the administrative report, but there is a comment there that I'll quote again. Adopting this matrix does not bind any individual councillor to how they, how they use it. You can't. I mean, an individual councillor is, you, you're here to make your own best judgment on the things you vote on. This is intended to obey council's direction to present a matrix. We've done that to the best of our ability as administration. As you've heard, it was kind of a collaborative effort between the numbers. So it's, you know, I guess the best way to answer it is you don't need to think that you're somehow in shackles if you adopt this. It's a way to approach the question. And if you want to adopt it or adapt it rather to your own views as to what is important and what isn't, you're free to do that. Totally.
Okay, fair enough. I'll read the motion into the record and then I guess we can go into debate. All right. That council approves the methodology described in the report dated March the 21st of 2022 entitled Standing Committee Evaluation Methodology for the purposes, for the purpose of evaluating the effectiveness of the standing committees in contributing to the good governance of the city and the desirability of continuing the committees after June 30th of 22 as set out in section 22 of both the Community Living Standing Committee Bylaw 39/2019 and the Community Growth and Infrastructure Bylaw 40/2019.
All right, accept that motion? Go ahead. Oh.
I was just reading what was in there. What, what did you add there?
I can read it if you want, I can see it. It ended with, together with such other questions, members of council have submitted.
No, he's just putting the motion that was in the package. Right, councillor Broadhead?
That's what it was going to do and then we can debate whether we want to add another clause into it or not, but in hearing what, would you mind if I opened?
No, I've accepted your motion. Go ahead.
Okay. So recognizing the debate around council and, and various perspectives and the response of administration, that, that this is a tool that council can use for its purpose in terms of providing input on what we believe is the the best way to evaluate the stand committees. I, I think there's flexibility there. And so what I heard from Mr. LaFleur was, is that there are ways that we can enter in our own perspectives, whether we like what was in the past or not, just in our commentary, we can use the matrix to our own end in, in presenting our own opinion on the efficacy of the standing committees as they currently exist. In the end, the idea is that we present a body of information that council can can consider and then pass motion in June as to whether or not we wish to continue with our current structure or change it or abandon it or whatever the will of council is at that date.
Thank you for that. Councillor Mackay?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, could you please transcribe my comments that I said in the previous question period and move them into debate? And I mean, I mean, I basically, Mr. LaFleur asked my question in reverse. I mean, that's exactly what I read. That's exactly how I interpreted it. And whether or not we use the evaluation matrix that's in front of us or just use it as the guideline, which is I intended to do, because it's such a subjective evaluation on behalf of every member of council. And I would encourage new members of council to review kind of different models that are available and out there and you utilize by many different municipalities in our region around how they deal with these types of standing matters and the more informal committees that then inform council. I would encourage them to look at that information on their own, because when this comes back to us in June, we're there, we're going to have to then have a motion on the floor depending on what we determine, because I mean, there's going to have to be a supplemental motion based on the outcome of, of this review. So we're going to either vote to keep the committees as we have, we're going to vote that then to have administration go back and potentially as councillor Hughes identify other different models at that particular time. The intent of this exercise is just to whether or not this model that we are working in works. Doesn't say that we should go back to standing committee. It doesn't say that we should look at a new and different type of model that, that's out there. If, if coming back in June, the, it's the will of council to say, yeah, the standing committees don't work, then we direct administration to then come back with other alternatives, or we can debate, or we can present what we think we need to go for. So I mean, I'm, this is, this is just something that has to come back before the end of March around putting something in front of us, providing feedback. That's all it is. So I'm voting to support it and I'm, I don't, I don't think we need to add any additional questions. The flexibility is in the tool. We can just do it.
Thank you. All right, councillor Killick?
Yeah, my, thank you. My observation is that this, this was actually to give us an objective matrix to take this subjectivity out of it. We may choose to answer, as we always will, with our own filters and background knowledge in a subjective way. But this was to give us a tool that we could all look at and follow and get us, I, I don't know, 80% of the way there. My sense is by adding that and other questions, it gives us a flexibility to share amongst our council. it gives us a flexibility to share amongst our council members, peers, some other questions that we might like to see considered. Again, so that they're shared before our June deadline and as Mr. Lafard advised that we should do earlier than later. And to to kind of build on the matrix, it it gives us the opportunity to do that, share a few extra questions that we might like to have in there and and move forward. I I think that's the direction I would like to go. And just flesh out the the matrix a little bit more before we lock it in and say, that's it. End of the day, we'll still answer the questions in somewhat of a subjective manner, but at least we're all working from the same tool. And and hopefully we'll get to remove the emotion away from the debate, get us to a more objective analysis of what we've got in front of us. So that would that would be my hope. I did like when I saw the the extra line of wording added into the the revised motion and that would be what I would support.
All right, I see no more hands up. So councillor Broadhead to close.
Well, fair enough. Let's see how the vote goes and then we'll see whether we need to add more questions or not.
Because it is 3:06, we have a public hearing, so I'm calling for the vote. Voting's close. And that motion passes by majority. Okay, I would love to give you guys a break, but we have three clock public hearings, so we are now on to agenda item 7.1, Bylaw 3, 2022 and 4, 2022 land use bylaw amendments. So I will open the public hearing. As per the process you guys are now very familiar with, we'll have a presentation from planning. I see Christine has got her camera on, ready to go. And then allow you to ask questions and then we will go to the public and I do have Jim Kilo and Bladen and Courtney all registered to speak and that's all I know of right now. Is that correct? Cheryl, just the three speakers. All right. All right, so Christina, why don't you take it away and then we'll open it up for questions?
Great. Well, I've got the easy job of introducing Craig Walker, who is the planner working on this file. This was an application from UDI to amend the land use bylaw. So Craig, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Ms. Peter, and I'll just attempt to share my screen here. Okay, does that show up, Mayor Heron?
It's perfect. Yep.
Perfect. So again, my name is Craig Walker with the Planning Branch and I'm here today to overview two proposed text amendments to the land use bylaw as applied for by the Urban Development Institute. The first bylaw entails removing something that the Planning Branch calls lot width distribution regulations. These regulations were first incorporated into the land use bylaw prior to the establishment of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board and the municipal development plan. And essentially, they require that certain proportions of single detached lots be wider than the minimum width requirements. The intent was originally to facilitate more housing variety, but that's only variety among single detached dwellings. And if you then fast forward a number of years, the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board comes into being. And accordingly, the new municipal development plan now requires minimum densities, variety among all housing forms, not just your single detached, and in general, just broader solutions for achieving long term fiscal sustainability. And I think it's also worth noting that these regulations have been amended several times over the years to reflect the evolving needs of the housing market. UDI submits that these needs are changing yet again. And as such, their proposal involves removing the two parts of the land use bylaw where these regulations are referenced. Section 8.23 shown on the screen here in yellow pertains to developing neighborhoods. While Schedule H, shown on the screen here in green, pertains to certain established neighborhoods. The lot width distribution regulations don't apply basically to anything else you see on the screen here. So villageroo, neighborhoods within area redevelopment plans, neighborhoods without area structure plans. And they don't apply to anything except single detached lots. So for example, they wouldn't pertain to semi-detached townhomes or non-residential uses. The next couple of slides are going to outline how the regulations differ in these yellow versus green areas. So starting off with the yellow. As a generalization, they prescribe subdividing a greater supply of wider lots and a lesser supply of narrower lots. And the issue that UDI has with this, their their chief issue ultimately is that it's challenging to satisfy density policies. So for example, Madam Mayor, the municipal development plan prescribes a minimum density of 40 dwelling units per hectare. Be that as it may, these regulations stipulate that certain proportions of all the lots need to be quite a bit wider. So there are some challenges there and for related reasons, it also inhibits introducing more diverse housing options. The report elaborated further on these issues. And we do have some representatives from UDI here to answer any questions as well. Moving on to the green areas. The lot width distribution regulations here are essentially similar to the yellow areas, yet involve subdividing even wider lots. And really, that's just indicative of the housing stock, the housing genre 20, 30, 40 years ago. The issue UDI has with this is none, to be frank, since these neighborhoods are fully built out already. The exception is the Pineview 2 and Kingswood Area Structure Plan, which was originally adopted back in 96, yet still has several areas, as shown here in red, which never developed. Upon undertaking a bit of research, we found that no other municipalities examined regulate lot width distribution. So in the report, we outlined 14 of them, some bigger, some smaller, both urban and rural, none of whom regulate this level of detail within their land use bylaws. We can also advise that housing variety can still be achieved via other planning tools like area structure plans and redistricting applications, both of which, of course, require council decisions. But UDI submits that once districting, as approved by council, is in place and we're then on to the subdivision stage, the specific variety of lot widths is best determined by the land development industry as opposed to predetermined by the land use bylaw. So in summary, this first bylaw seeks to provide developers with more flexibility to subdivide any mix of lot widths for single detached dwellings to assist the city achieve long term density and housing goals in a more viable manner. Moving on to the next bylaw, which is completely unrelated. With this one, UDI proposes consistent three meter corner lot side setbacks for all street oriented townhouses when the heights are up to 11 meters, which for your information is equivalent to the height of a single detached dwelling. Five districts in the land use bylaw currently allow such townhomes, each with either a three or a four meter setback. Each of these districts also differ in their maximum height regulations. So upon undertaking some research, we can advise that the cities of Edmonton and Spruce Grove both allow three meter setbacks in comparable contexts. And ultimately, as detailed in the report, the Planning Branch is supportive of this amendment, which really creates consistent heights and consistent setbacks for street oriented townhouses. So just to clarify, Madam Mayor, when townhouse, when, excuse me, townhomes are up to that 11 meter height threshold, the proposal is that all districts, not just some of them, will have the same three meter setbacks on corner lots. When the townhomes are any taller, they'll continue to have that same four meter setback that they have today. As such, the Planning Branch is recommending that upon closure of the public hearing today, council considers giving second and third readings to both bylaws. I'm now happy to answer any questions and point out again that a representative or a couple of them from UDI is here as well. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Walker. So if a councillor asks a question that you think is better directed to one of the UDI representatives, just let me know. And when we get to that part of the public hearing, I'll allow that councillor to go there. So I've got councillor Killick up first. Go ahead.
I don't know how I got to the top of the list there. I appreciate it. A simple question I think is, would these change in regulations affect our infill strategy in mature neighborhoods that we're looking at? Or will it be in sync with those?
Through the chair to councillor Killick. Mainly, this is going to pertain to your greenfield new neighborhoods. Really, because our established neighborhoods are already fully developed, these really are have no, perhaps to minimal, impact on subdivision opportunities in the future. In a lot of instances, that really boils down to the land use bylaw and the minimum lot widths. The lot width distribution regulations really would be a non-issue in in the majority of circumstances here.
So so if somebody wanted in a mature neighborhood with a large lot, wanted to subdivide it, would would this have an impact or not? It would be a separate activity of subdividing?
So through the chair to councillor Killick, if I'll just go back back to one of the first slides I showed and just bear with me here, share my screen again. This slide here depicts where the lot width distribution regulations don't apply. And I'm not sure if you can see my mouse cursor or not, but the vast majority, great, the vast majority of established neighborhoods, these regulations aren't applicable to anyway, including area redevelopment plans, non-residential uses and the the bulk majority of neighborhoods where there is no statutory plan in effect. So long story short, no, these regulations really do not impact the vast majority of established neighborhoods.
Thank you.
All right, councillor McKay.
Yeah, thank you and thank you councillor Killick. I wanted some reassurances there as well, but I have, I mean, in the previously submitted report and and I might be remain consistent with another motion that we've got coming later on, but you refer the land use bylaw rewrite project. What's our progress in relation to that? Like, when are we anticipating that coming back to council?
I I guess I will try to answer this question and maybe I'll ask our director of planning and development to give a little bit more of an update, but I think initial first reading, we're looking at the end of 2022 to come back to council for first reading. You know, timelines may change over once we start actually getting into it, but at that, at this stage, I think that's the timeline that we've got in place.
I'm just looking from a perspective of patchwork, piecemeal, where we jump around in relation to some of these things. I mean, regardless of the identification of potentially something we should be doing on not only to remain competitive, but I just hate jumping around and jumping around. So I mean, if this was something that was being, was this something that would be considered in the rewrite project? Anyways, or and come back to us as a recommendation was, would you?
We would have come back, we would have explored this probably through the land use bylaw rewrite. However, this was actually a private application. So we must bring forward any private applications to council for your consideration. This isn't an administration amendment application. This is one brought on by UDI. So any that we get brought on, any applications or changes to the land use bylaw at this stage will most likely be brought forward by as a will be will occur because of a private application, either from a land developer or another organization.
Madam Mayor, can I ask?
Go ahead.
Of the of either Courtney or?
Yeah, we're going to get there.
I don't know who, I mean, Courtney, are you representing?
We're gonna let's finish administration first.
Okay, yeah, then I'll, because you had just fooled me when you said, would they, if I asked the question, would they respond?
Then when if if I did, if they didn't want to respond to it, I would.
I will wait and I will wait and ask.
Yeah, because I know councillor Hughes has her hand up, so. Councillor Hughes, questions of administration?
I just a quick one. So the setbacks to the townhomes, you were saying that it's three meters and we're under 11 meters and four meters higher. I guess when you're looking at a setback from a side yard, why is the height a concern? Because if you can't see around the corner, you can't see around the corner, regardless if it's 11 meters or 15 meters. So what is the logic behind having a different height based on that or a different setback based on that height?
Through the chair to councillor Hughes. It's really, my understanding is it's just about consistency. So UDI have just requested the R3, R3A and R4 districts to just have that same setback as you as we already have in the RX and RXL. So regardless of the height, it's purely just about consistency. And that's a great question that perhaps the applicants could elaborate on further, but our our understanding is it's purely just about consistency.
And from a land use bylaw perspective, if I may add, it's a little bit about the massing and the impact of the massing of the building on the block itself.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you the administration. One of the concerns within the the community is that the the planning of our community still resides with council. And you said, Mr. Walker, that the the changes here allow for consistency and and freedom of movement, but but the idea of other planning tools coming to bear still exists. Can you maybe just expand on how that actually plays out in practice?
Certainly through the chair to councillor Broadhead. So as this audience is well aware, there are various tiers to the planning process. So it kind of goes from broad, high level legislation right down to nitty gritty detail in the land use bylaw and everything in between. Ultimately, last spring, council approved a new municipal development plan that seeks to align with the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Growth Plan. It seeks to grow in, seeks to grow up and seeks to grow out in a manner that's more efficient. Provides for broader array of housing forms and densities and so on and so forth. Underneath the municipal development plan now, we've got the area structure plan level and that's where council can really start to approve specific land uses, specific densities, road network locations and so on and so forth. So that is sort of the typical planning process we see throughout Alberta and across all provinces for the most part. What UDI is saying, though, is that once districting is in place, if their subdivision proposal complies with the minimum regulations outlined in the land use bylaw, which let's remember already take into consideration things related to drainage and parking and density and so on and so forth. They really need that land use bylaw to be nimble enough so that they can get into the ground in an efficient manner. The housing market can change, as the applicants will attest, in a matter of months, weeks sometimes. So they really need that flexibility when they're deciding when to proceed with a subdivision application. They don't have time to wait six months to amend plans and land use bylaws and so on to cater for their proposal. They need to get in, they need to take advantage of the market. And based on what the market is doing that particular construction season. So long winded answer perhaps, but what UDI is saying is that once council have approved the area structure plan, saying here's generally where we want these types of land uses. Here's generally where we want these kinds of densities. Once that land has been redistricted accordingly, they really then need to be in a position where they have flexibility to choose, are they going to subdivide small, medium or large lots? As they do in all other municipalities examined. And councillor, if I could make one more comment, when we examined all of those other municipalities, I would say that all of them evidently continue to see small, medium and large lots provided regardless of the fact that their land use bylaws don't require it. So variety among single detached housing is still going to be provided. UDI is just saying they would like to make that call rather than have the land use bylaw sort of arbit. UDI is just saying they would like to make that call, rather than have the land use bylaw sort of arbitrarily predetermine it. Maybe two years, five years ahead of schedule, if that makes sense.
Well, it does. I guess in the end, what you're telling council then is when we establish the ASP and the land use districts within it, we are making our decision around how the community is built out. Would that be a fair statement?
That is correct, councillor. And in a lot of ways, council is laying the planning framework for, let's say, eighty to ninety percent of the details. UDI is just saying for that remaining ten to twenty percent of the details, let them in their area of expertise do what they do best in the private sector.
Fair enough. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Okay, good. Just looking for further questions. Councillor Bermansky.
Thank you to the mayor to administration. I have a question related to councillor Killick's previous question about infill in older neighborhoods. You have a lot of the Schedule H, which is the green shaded area. Why is there a need for that if it's not going to affect those neighborhoods?
Through the chair to councillor Bermansky, excellent question. It's one of those circumstances where by removing section eight point two three, which is the the yellow areas, the developing neighborhoods, because that section refers to Schedule H, in a sense, if you get rid of the yellow areas, you kind of throw the baby with the bathwater, for lack of a better term. So if you remove the section eight point two three, which points to Schedule H for some circumstances, you are inevitably removing Schedule H as well. And for the most part, it would not make any difference, as I pointed out, the one exception would just be that Pine V2 and Kingswood area, where there are still a few pockets that haven't developed in the last three decades or so.
Thank you.
All right, I see no more questions or hands up for our questions of administration. So I'm going to go to the public, which is really the proponent. Sorry, I go to the proponent first before the public anyway. So I've got I've got Blaine Dibbin from Select Engineering, Jim Keelo from Rohit and Courtney Jensen from Strata. I don't know if you guys have presentations. And Courtney, I don't know if you're representing Strata or UDI, the subcommittee. So, do you guys have a presentation to start with?
I do, yeah.
Oh, you do. And so Courtney, are you representing Strata or the UDI?
UDI with the presentation could go either way with the questions.
Okay.
I'll clarify though.
And are you presenting on behalf of your two colleagues, or does everyone have their own presentation?
No, I think I'm the only one with a presentation. I asked colleagues to attend as well as joint proponents. And just so that if there's any questions where you want a little bit different perspective on the answers, there's some variety here for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, if you'll give me one moment, this is going to be my first time sharing a screen here with council. Okay, is that shared?
It sure is.
Right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Courtney Jensen, and I'm speaking in my role as committee chair for the Urban Development Institute St Albert Committee. I'm here today to speak in support of the land use bylaw amendment change. I'll keep my presentation brief, as administration's done an excellent job covering a lot of the material already. But I wanted to be here to present and answer questions to show that there is support for this change. This change is very much in alignment with the new MDP policy that was adopted last year as administration has mapped out in terms of housing diversity and density goals. We are aware that a larger LUB update is moving forward, bringing the overall bylaw more into line with MDP policy. I'm speaking in support of this early change for UDI, as all members support the change. But I want to note that this early advancement was brought forward by Strata and Rohit specifically with the support of Select Engineering, because they're the only developers currently developing communities that need to meet the forty units per hectare density today. And this has an early impact that will shape those overall communities. Adopted ASPs have been approved. Sorry, it's not moving my slide here. There we go.
There we go.
Adopted ASPs have been approved with the assumption that low-density areas will build out between twenty and thirty units per hectare, depending on each of the plans. As real lauding has taken place with the most current version of the land use bylaw, it's been proven out that the lot width distribution results in density on the ground of more like twenty-five units per hectare and lower. In real communities, the lauding doesn't achieve the efficiency efficiency shown by looking at only rectangular interior lots along a straight road. As a result, if the lot width distribution remains, new communities will be forced to build out a majority of the low-density areas as duplexes or make ASP changes to increase the size or density of multi-sites to achieve the mandated units per hectare. While there are work around, while these are workaround ways to get to our density requirements, they would not create well-planned and well-balanced communities as the plans that we've already had approved do. As administration has already noted, other municipalities do not have this requirement. And St Albert, it has been amended numerous times because it doesn't keep up with changing market conditions and neighborhood planning best practices. The original intent of the clause was to ensure housing diversity within the single-family home category. Now we realize that housing diversity needs to be balanced in terms of diversity between all housing products. And it's more important to right-size the single-family lots rather than to force them to be larger than what meets the needs of homebuyers, and instead build more duplexes than the market demands in order to make the density math work. These details show the first stage of Shro and all of the different products that will be in a first stage alone. It illustrates well a high level of housing diversity. Estate lots are still developed in all regional municipalities. They're just located where there are amenities existing to create demand for them. And no land use bylaw clause such as the lot width distribution is required to achieve that. There are a few remaining slides that you would have gotten in your package, but they're just supplementary in anticipation of possible questions. And really, that concludes my presentation. Jim, Bladen and I are here to answer any questions that council may have.
All right, thank you. My first question is, when is your term up as committee chair of the St Albert Committee? Just like you've been there forever.
Well, Cathy, I tried to pass the torch before. It was rejected.
Councillor Mackay has a question.
Yeah, thanks Courtney for your presentation, and I think you answered it in anticipation of it, and I appreciate it. It's just in relation to the land use bylaw rewrite that was undergoing as part of the MDP. And my comments during questions to administration was around just patchwork. And but it's UDI's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's your UDI and you as a developer and Jim, you as a developer as well. Moving forward in this building season that you anticipate moving into this type of product? So you need us to move on this today, or you would wait until the end of the year, and that would cause you some challenge?
We're asking for it in advance of the overall update, because while we put together a fairly exhaustive list of areas we'd like administration to consider for the overall land use bylaw update. These two items were items that needed to be addressed, in our opinion, for this year's construction to be facilitated. While I do confirm that all of the industry development partners who are part of UDI support this change going forward, nobody else needed it to happen other than Rohit and Strata. We're the only two developers developing at the forty units per hectare right now. And so when we're planning our communities, we need to be able to plan our communities holistically and make sure that we're not doing patchwork planning. We want to make sure that we're already putting together community plans that meet the overall MDP goals and not meet the overall MDP goals, starting with stage two or three.
Great, thanks.
The rest of the development community, though, will have these same issues come up for them as soon as they're into their areas that have to meet the forty units per hectare. Majority of them are still building out existing communities that have grandfathered densities, and so like, I hate to bring it down to a math problem, but it's a math problem for us. It's meeting that forty number with X number of estate or large lots, X number of median lots, X number of small lots. The result is that to meet our forty units per hectare, if we have to meet that distribution, it means that we have to significantly reduce the number of single-family homes that we put in it in the stage and in overall community in order to get that overall number to where it has to be.
No, I really appreciate it, Courtney, and I realize the difficult, you're wearing two hats here today. Was this, just curiosity, was this, I don't recall this being identified by UDI in the MDP amendments that you guys brought forward. Was it something that was just an oversight, or was it just something that just kind of just kind of popped in right now?
No, the detail that is causing the difficulty lies in the land use bylaw as opposed to the municipal development plan. We are supportive of densities as they've been set out by the EMRB. We worked with the MRB and all of the member communities and gave input at that time. So it's not the density that we have the problem with. It's making sure that we have the right tools in the land use bylaw to be able to achieve that density without, for example, building a bunch of estate lots and then a bunch of high-rises so that the combined density average meets what it has to meet. What we want is a large variety, and we want that variety of product to be appropriate as per market demand.
Thank you.
All right. I'm actually seeing no more questions. Courtney, do you have any idea what Melkor's density in Jensen Lakes is?
I don't have that number offhand, but Bladen might. It's under forty, I know, up until their new quarter section, which they'll be bringing in, which has to meet forty. So their current is not their new will be, but Bladen might have that answer.
Yeah, yeah. So in the original two quarter sections in the south, it meets the thirty-five meters, or units per hectare. And then new one is increased quite a bit because of the and so on an average, it's over forty, but on the north one, I believe it's, I can't remember the exact number, but it's, it is definitely higher than forty.
Okay, I just, I know that they've done a fair amount of large lots, especially in the northern section, and to reflect the demand, so it's irrelevant, but I was just curious.
Yeah, and when you have a neighborhood with with high levels of amenity, that like, it's where you end up with larger lots, it's different park. Yeah, different neighborhoods, different areas of the city would have different types of product. And there's still a mix there.
All right, I'm seeing no more questions for our proponents. I don't know, Jim, if you wanted to add anything?
No mayor here, and I have nothing to add. I think Courtney and Bladen and staff have covered it quite effectively.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
And we actually have no members of the public to speak, so I see councillor Mackay is already going for the motion to close public hearing, but I'm just going to open it up to council if you have any questions back to administration as a result of what you just heard. I'm seeing none, so go ahead, councillor Mackay.
That the public hearing on bylaws three slash twenty twenty-two and four slash twenty twenty-two be closed.
All right. Call for the vote. Councillor Bermansky? We're still waiting for your vote, councillor Bermansky? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Care to carry on, councillor Mackay? Go ahead.
That bylaw three slash twenty twenty-two being amendment two zero six to land use bylaw nine slash two zero zero five lot width distribution in section eight point two three and Schedule H be read a second time.
All right, any comments?
I think the comments were added all by the proponent and any questions. I mean, obviously, this is allowing them to meet the density targets, which are in EMRB. And it also, it was very interesting, and I appreciate administration and also UDI coming forward with some of the kind of our benchmark communities, and it's interesting that it's, I mean, it took this to identify moving forward that we were kind of an outlier, so I appreciate that. So thank you very much. But this will always, this will also help us with our whole whole plan and our strategic plan existing and probably perhaps moving forward around that whole diversity of housing and providing a more of a, more of a mix that we seem to be missing. That's why I want to support this.
Thank you for that. Councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too am going to support this. Actually, I believe this is a real positive move in the city of St Albert, because our current lot with distribution lends itself to large lots, single-family dwellings, and then one corner of an ASP is set aside for high-density, high sort of multi-floored multifamily, simply to meet the EMRB mandated density. So as I understand this, this will take the pressure off that kind of build form. And so introduce a more seamless way of introducing the forty dwelling units per hectares. So anyway, it has my support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. Councillor Killick.
Yes, thank you. I'll definitely be supporting this. I appreciate UDI's bringing this forward and identifying it for us. Certainly appreciate administration bringing it forward and doing the comparators, comparators around the region. If it makes St Albert development easier for our developers and more competitive in the region, and we can meet our density targets, that's, that's all great. Particularly appreciate the clarification around the section eight dot two three and and Schedule H. I was a little bit confused on that, but a really very simplistic explanation, which I appreciate. And makes it much easier for me to support this going forward. Again, as we look to meet the, our developers meet the needs of the marketplace, this gives them the flexibility. And we should embrace that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hughes.
Yeah, I just, I think that we need to allow this flexibility to occur. When you're putting in density requirements to forty units per hectare, you have to let the developers use every tool they have in their toolbox to try to meet those. And this will basically just meet up to market demand. So they, if there's a market for it, it won't sell. So they'll sell as many lots as they can of the various sizes. And we've heard multiple times that this is not affected with lot sizes overall in other communities that have taken this requirement out. So I'm confident that it will, the larger lots will still be available for those who want it. And also, just mayor hand to your question about the of the density in Jensen Lakes, from what I remember, because you know, I remember my numbers, it was thirty-two minutes a hectare. So that's.
All right, I'm seeing no more and else with their hand up. Feels like this has got a lot of support in our council. I think I've expressed to Courtney in the past that I was hesitant on this one. St Albert's known for big homes and big lots, and councillor Broadhead and I've been through this evolution of the lot mix ratio for a long time, and it was something we kind of almost prided ourselves on, that we wanted to ensure that there was this mix. But that was actually relating to my question around Jensen Lakes, because allowing the market to drive what is available, I think will still allow for a good diversity in housing. And obviously, I'm super supportive of of the density from the growth plan to in the avoidance of sprawl and the excessive infrastructure you have to put in when you have those big lots. So I'll be supporting this as well. Councillor Mackay to close.
No, I think you wrapped it up quite well. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote. Sorry. Council Hughes, we need your vote. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Council Mackay, I think we're on to the third reading.
That bylaw three slash twenty twenty-two be read a third time.
All right, I accept that. Anything further on this?
No, thank you.
All right, I see no more hands up, so call for the vote. All right, voting's closed. That passes unanimously. There's still two more, Council Mackay.
Yeah, there's a separate bylaw, though.
Yeah, the second bylaw, yeah, two more motions.
Yep, that bylaw four slash twenty twenty-two being amendment two zero seven to land use by law nine slash two zero zero five, the townhouse setbacks in sections eight point two-nine and eight point three-four be read a second time.
All right, anything on that one?
No, I don't think so. I think it fits in. I mean, it is a little different matter, but it, it's the same argument.
Yeah, it didn't spark a lot of conversation, did it? All right, I see no hands up, so I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that passes unanimously. Third reading.
That bylaw four slash twenty twenty-two be read a third time. No comment.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Yep, okay, sorry, I missed it. And that passes unanimously. All right, thanks, guys. We are on to eight point two, but why don't we take a quick break? Seems like a logical place to take a break. Yeah, I will send him a message, and why don't we be back in our chairs at four o'clock? Message, Chris, Mr. Shaver, sorry. Do you, do you want, do you want to stick around? So we have three things, four things on the agenda before we get to the e-scooters.
Yeah, that's okay. I just have it on in the background, so.
Okay, I know, I'm sure we're very entertaining.
Yeah, well, I've sat through so many committee and council meetings in my history, so.
Okay, all right, we'll be back at four for the continuation of our agenda. All right, it is now four o'clock. Getting rid of the echo. Yeah, somebody give David a new nickname.
Yeah, we're gonna give you the nickname Echo.
All right, and I've got Council Hughes, I see, and Council Bromansky, and Council Jolly just sat down. Awesome. So we're all back, ready to go. Next thing on our agenda, which you can already see the screen sharing, is provincial budget implications. Trevor, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Heron, and good afternoon, council. I'm pleased to present, co-present today's presentation with Ann Victor, the city's interim director of financial services and IT. As noted in the background report, the tax and governance structure of Canada requires partnerships between federal, provincial, and local governments to provide needed and desired services to our shared residents, businesses, and customers. As residents physically live and work in our cities, towns, villages, and rural communities, municipal governments are in the position of having to directly provide or support almost all of these required services. At the same time, municipalities have limited ability to generate revenues outside of property taxes compared with other orders of government who have access to other funding mechanisms. It has long been recognized that financial support from the federal and provincial governments is critical for, for municipalities, most notably in the area of infrastructure management. Municipalities are responsible for sixty percent of all public infrastructure. A large portion of the city's capital funding is accessed through federal and provincial programs. The types of programs and the level of financial support varies from government to government and consistently leaves municipalities in a state of uncertainty. As council is aware, the government of Alberta tabled their twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five budget on February twenty-fourth. This budget represents a shift from provincial recovery to growth and is founded on three pillars, those being healthcare capacity, investment and skills development and training, and the fiscal principles articulated within the McKinnon Blue Ribbon Panel Report. This is the first balanced budget for the government of Alberta since twenty fourteen fifteen fiscal year, and this has been enabled in part by the funding cuts absorbed by municipalities, including the city of St. Albert. This budget did not include any new cuts to municipalities, but notably implements the previously communicated twenty-five percent funding reduction to the municipal sustainability initiative. I'll now let Ms. Victor speak to some of the specific impacts to St. Albert.
Good afternoon. So the Alberta municipalities described this as a flat budget for municipalities in their webinar in February, identifying municipal impacts. So from a city St. Albert perspective, the city will absorb an estimated annual recurring funding reduction of approximately five million through the following changes. So in regard to the municipal sustainability initiative grant funding, that this twenty-five percent reduction results in an annual reduction of four million in MSI funding. So this is based on that average MSI funding received in two seventeen to two twenty of fifteen point one million compared to the average funding allocation for two twenty-one to two twenty-three of the eleven point one million. So which equates to a So which equates to a four million reduction. So MSI will be replaced in 2024 with a local government fiscal framework. While the allocation formula is being established in the months ahead, initial projections of this based on the total budget allocation from the province is indicating that this twenty-five reduction will be ongoing. So the reductions do not impact the ability to fund capital projects that were approved for the two twenty-two budget, but they will impact the amount of funding available for capital projects in the next couple of years. So as these reductions were previously previously communicated, like Trevor indicated through the prior provincial budget, administrative administration proactively reduced that funding allocated to the growth capital in the last two years to evenly distribute out this reduction and ensure that the funding is available for two twenty-three and two twenty-four for those growth capital projects. An additional impact in two twenty-two is the removal of the emergency management preparedness program, so that equates to about a loss of five thousand in grant revenue. And some of the prior year cumulative budget changes that continue to be absorbed are that city share of fine revenue resulted in that annual loss of six hundred and twenty K in prior years, the grants in place of taxes reduction in that annual loss of seventy-five K, and the DNA biology case works that resulted in additional twenty-five K. Something that does represent a future financial risk is that disaster recovery program. So before the assistance was a hundred percent, and now they're limiting to ninety percent. So what that says is any future disaster, the city would need to cover ten percent of those expenses. In regards additionally, the city will see the following tertiary impact. So through the education property tax, so the provincial education requisition will increase by one point five percent across the province. The city of St. Albert's share of this increase will be determined by the equalized assessment process where municipalities across Alberta are brought to a common assessment year. The city assessments are just in the process of being finalized, and the impact of this will be communicated as part of the tax rate bylaw in May. And I'm going to pass it back to Trevor.
Yeah, thanks, Ann. So some of the other things of note within the budget is that there's nine point one million dollars budgeted to to modernize the land title service model. This was something city administration was pleased to see. It's something we've been hearing from the development industry, that there's a backlog within land titles. So the intent here to help expedite development efforts is good. EMS, six hundred and three million dollars is budgeted for this with new funding to address capacity needs and other pressures in the system as a new provincial EMS service plan is developed. The government's strategic plan that accompanied the budget noted that they will seek to improve and optimize emergency medical services across the province through actions identified by the Alberta EMS Provincial Advisory Committee. So the city continues to work with stakeholders to improve the EMS system. Capital plan projects in the Edmonton metropolitan region, the three and a half million dollars awarded to active communities, Alberta's proposed outdoor rec facility, Community Hub, was the only new line item in the capital plan specific to the Edmonton metro region. All the other projects listed there had previously been communicated in the previous provincial budget. However, as funding envelopes and programs from the budget are implemented, additional projects could be announced by the province within the Edmonton metro region. And as far as rate given drive is concerned, the province's share for the twenty agreement is set to be identified in next year's budget with twenty twenty-five, twenty-six being the inaugural year for the province's share of funding contributions. So prior to the creation of the budget, Mayor Heron and city staff engaged with relevant provincial ministries, including transportation, seniors and housing, infrastructure, finance, and treasury board, and municipal affairs regarding city priorities. The city remains well positioned to work with government of Alberta to transition from provincial recovery to growth through strategic infrastructure investments that improve economic, social, and environmental outcomes. Council has had historical success partnering with the province on strategic infrastructure investments like the twenty free given drive. From a financial perspective, the city also remains well positioned due to council's proactive work of investing in the infrastructure deficit and utilizing the one and a half percent ARMOUR surcharge. This provides more security in ensuring existing assets can be properly and fully maintained through the existing tax base and that capital grants should be utilized to support growth-related projects. Continued engagement with the provincial government will occur through the spring to identify and action opportunities of mutual benefit. And this will be true with respect to exploring partnerships for affordable housing, working with the province and advocacy associations on an allocation formula for the local government fiscal framework, and by seeking and partnering on strategic infrastructure investments moving forward and seeking operational supports as necessary to ensure long-term sustainability. So with that, Madam Mayor, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to take any questions. And also, we have staff from finance and assessment online to answer questions.
All right, I see councillor Broadhead is first to the bat.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and all of the information. This is sort of an aside, but the provincial government has just announced that they are matching the federal government's money for public transit. What does that mean specifically to St. Albert? I'm wondering if Ms. Victor has that dollar figure.
And you know what councillor Broadhead, maybe I can jump in. During the council meeting, we've actually been getting some correspondence from the Transportation Ministry on this. And so we're going to be getting our exact allocation of that of that program later this week. And then they're looking for the grant agreement to be executed before the end of March. So we don't know yet, but we'll know later this week.
Well, it's more than five cents and less than a hundred million, I would imagine. Thank you for that.
Councillor Mackay.
Thank you for your presentation. What concerns me out of this is that little kind of tag online where they say disaster recovery, disaster recovery program, pardon me, limited to ninety percent. Now, I mean, I mean, that ten percent could actually be significant, quite significant. I mean, I don't can't imagine what ten percent of the the fires and the floods were in the Wood Buffalo. So I mean, what's our exposure risk on that in relation? Where would we identify money that would be, let's say, we had a major flooding event? That would be in hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage to our downtown or infrastructure. I mean, how can we, like, can we, will our insurance cover that? Mayor, you all right?
Yeah, I just put my teeth.
So where would we, I guess the question is either to you, Trevor, or administration, but where would we come up with ten percent if it was a big disaster, substantial disaster?
I might have to defer to finance on this one.
That's a great question, councillor Mackay. That is something that we wanted to start addressing. We're having internal discussions that we're going to have to probably bring a plan forward to address for a strategy. And that's something that we would probably discuss with having reserves set aside or a certain percentage in the side in reserve. So some kind of strategy to address that because, yeah, it is definitely, you are correct, it's a it's a financial risk to the city.
I look forward to whatever comes back. I just needed to flag it because it sort of sits silent and you kind of don't really pay attention to it. But, you know, we're starting to see these one in one hundred year events coming up, one in one hundred days sometimes, you know, so. I mean, there is some, there is some risk there as we've identified. So I'm glad to see that you guys identified and flagged it. I look forward to it. Thank you.
I think honestly, the provincial government did that to sort of force municipalities to be planning their infrastructure to be resilient to these floods. Because if you continue to rebuild a home or a building in a flood zone and continue to charge administration in the province, then it kind of puts some of the onus on us.
Yeah, but what's ten percent of a bridge on St. Albert Trail?
Yeah, I agree.
Ten percent of roads? What's, you know, what's ten percent?
I think it's still a conversation amongst Diane and her colleagues in how to how to plan and put those into reserves and how much. And we haven't got there yet.
No, administration is currently working on a project that's in our administrative priorities from the last corporate business plan with regards to a reserve review. I mean, right now, our stabilization reserve would be the reserve that we, in theory, would use to support something like that. It's intended for those unanticipated one-time events. But certainly, in terms of the value or the maximum level of that reserve, this obviously was and has never been contemplated as being as being part of it. So we're just in the process of doing that reserve work right now, and we'll have something for council this year for sure.
Well, I mean, in follow-up, Madam Mayor, I mean, just the line of up at emergency management preparedness program grant removal. So I mean, they remove the grant that we look at to fund emergency planning, but then they cut back our funding or cap it at ninety percent. So you know, I mean, five grand in grant revenue doesn't sound like a lot, but I mean, again, it's doesn't, there's no synergies between the two.
All right. Yeah, I'm good. I see no more hands up, but I'll just ask, I had the ten percent for the disaster recovery. One thing I didn't see in here, and we talked about it a bit at strat planning, was the loss of the good loan rates for Alberta capital financing and then treasury. So it was just, I know it wasn't part of this year's budget, but a lot of stuff that was identified here was not part of budget. We knew about it long before. So I'm just probably don't have the impacts of that decision yet, but I think we need to continue to watch that as we go forward. It's because it's going to cost us, especially for municipalities such as ours, who has been so debt avoiding, and now we're ready to take on debt and right at the time when they raise interest rates on us. So that's another thing I wanted to point out. Any questions? All right, I see no more. Oh, councillor Killig, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to put it in perspective, we're talking about four to five million dollars that we're being asked to absorb. For our residents listening this evening, what does that mean in terms of tax increase, if if it was looked at that way? Just so we're very crystal clear on that point.
It would be about four percent tax increase.
Yeah, one point one million equates to a one percent approximately.
Yeah, so I don't know what that would mean on a four hundred thousand dollar home per year, but it's significant.
Yeah, does anybody have that as as the average four hundred? I'm not sure what the average home is anymore in St. Albert. It's a four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand, like, for for a, would it be? Four, four fifteen is the average.
Four, four fifty.
Four fifty. So average homeowner would.
So one percent on a four fifty house is what? Do we know per month? Come on, Diane.
I think Mr. Bannerman just turned his camera on. It might be a little answer.
Just looking up my old proper tax rate bylaw, I'll have an answer in a few seconds here.
Yeah, that would be, I'll give you time to answer, but I think that's really what this boils down to, and we want to be very crystal clear and transparent to our residents what challenge council will be facing in the coming coming budget deliberations. And this is, this is not our making or our doing. We're we're going to have to deal with it, but
And this is just provincial. We're not talking federal implications, especially our CMP.
That too, that too is coming. Take a moment just just to, you know, boil it down to what it means for our, for the average resident would be really helpful.
Okay, I see no more questions. So can I have a motion? I think it's probably received its information, wasn't it? Go ahead, councillor Mackay.
That council accept the report entitled provincial budget implications as information.
Any comments?
I think the comments were in the question. I mean, it's obviously quite concerning. I mean, we, you know, the province has touted a balanced budget, but in really, it's not a balanced budget for us. I mean, because, I mean, a zero increase budget actually is a loss. I mean, a negative budget for municipalities. I mean, it's just, we've heard of all of the implications, both in reduction in grants, grants and lieu, the implications of some of the other funding cutbacks and also change in programming that'll have substantive impacts on our municipality. So moving forward to provide the same level of services is going to require a tax increase. So we're either going to have to cut back our services or look for other revenue sources, which we have been doing, but it's just going to be challenging. It's going to be challenging and councillor Killick's question and when we get a response, I mean, it there are going to be obvious impacts. And so it's just, I appreciate administration presenting this and particularly presenting it in public at this particular time, because I think this information is very important and valuable. And the other shoe may drop, as you identified, Mayor, with federal impacts, particularly in relation to RCMP funding and other loss of revenues. But maybe there's also a balance there with other granting programs. I don't know. Let's hope, let's cross our fingers.
Go ahead, councillor Jolly.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo councillor Mackay's comments about, you know, essentially, there is one taxpayer. And the reductions, the provincial level, mean a net increase in taxes for for that one taxpayer. So I really appreciate this report from from Mr. Dooly and Ms. Victor. And I'd also like to thank Alberta municipalities and the RMA for providing their feedback on the budget. That's those are two very helpful resources as we determine strategies on how to move forward with these with these impacts. Thank you for that.
Councillor Hughes.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we look at this, it's no, it's nowhere near neutral. There's an increase to the education property tax, which residents are going to see on their tax bill. And then it still gets appropriated to the overall, what they have to pay at the end for June or on a monthly basis. We have the loss of the MSI, which is substantial. That was a huge contribution to many of our capital projects, and it's a huge hit, the amount that they're taking off, and not adjusting in spite of the fact that oil prices are significantly higher than when they first announced they were doing that hit. And now we have the added risk to try to handle disasters, which is, if you could predict a disaster, you could prevent it often. And I'm thinking of the communities that have faced it, like Fort McMurray. This could bankrupt the community if they had like a massive flood or a fire, and it could have the same effects to us depending on what would happen. And even if we're going to do a reserve to handle it, now we're taking tax dollars to handle something which hopefully we'll never have to dip into. But those are now tax dollars that we can't use for anything else, that we can't put towards other programs and services or capital programs that have now been cut. If we want to take that away to handle disaster mitigation with the hopes of never having to use it. So this is actually a really big hit for municipalities, and it will be a big hit for taxpayers in St. Albert in that we now have less money to work with, and we are now going, their education taxes are going to go up. And we have to now take from our current funds money aside for risk. And if you're going to have a disaster, it's not going to be a five million dollar disaster. It's going to be fifty, a hundred million dollar disasters. This is going to be a huge hit if we ever had something. And it's difficult to hold your breath on that. I guess to administration, one question I'm asking, I'm thinking of as I said all this, is is there any way we could get insurance for disaster mitigation? And that might be something that if there is an insurance policy on that, if there isn't, maybe they want to develop an insurance policy on that to handle this, so that maybe we don't have to take extra money out of our current operating funding just to try to put into something of that magnitude. But I really do appreciate this summary. Trevor, it was very well done, and it really did help us give us a snapshot of what was happening at the provincial level. So well done on that. Thank you.
All right, I see no more hands up. I'll just add that even a flat, FCS did not get an increase, stayed flat at a million bucks or whatever it was. We're growing. So that's a reduction for us essentially. So it's, but at the same time, we have to acknowledge where they did help us. So both the federal and the provincial government did step up for transit operating. So we've had, we've had some wins here and there, and that needs to be acknowledged too. But overall, this is this is a balanced budget, balanced on the backs of municipalities. That's what I said when I this is a balanced budget balanced on the backs of municipalities. That's what I said when I did my speaking thing at Alberta municipalities and still feel that way. Councilor McKay to close.
I better not say anything more.
Okay.
I might get myself in trouble.
Call for the vote.
Mayor Hearn. Mayor Hearn, just a quick math.
Just we're in the middle of the vote, Mr. Bannerman, so let's finish this off, and then I'll go to you. Okay? Voting's closed. I've got to nod. Okay. That passes unanimously. All right, did you get us that price on a on a $450,000 home?
Thank you, Mayor Hearn. Our typical assessment last year was 435,000. So you'd be paying $3,706 municipal taxes, and a four percent increase would be an increase of $148 in municipal taxes.
A year, right?
You bet, a year.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Okay. We are now on to, my agenda is so wet. No, I'm good. I can read it. Offsite levies. It's my favorite topic of the entire 12-month calendar. Love offsite levies. And we got Tanya, who actually really gets this and explains it well. So go ahead.
Sorry, I see I'm muted. I apologize. I just need to hide my thumbnail, and we're good to go. Okay, so good afternoon. My name is Tanya Heinz, and I'm the supervisor of long-term engineering. I'm here today to present the offsite levy annual report and the offsite levy bylaw update. Today, I'm going to review the functionality of St. Albert's offsite levy model and how staging and historical expenditures impact the rate calculations. We're then going to move on to the changes in the projects that impacted the 2022 update and plans for this year. And we seem to have a, there we go. So Section 648 of the MGA allows for the imposition and payment of an offsite levy in respect to land that is to be developed or subdivided. St. Albert adopted an offsite levy bylaw after the 2007 annexation. It was determined at that time that the existing base level infrastructure did not have the capacity to support new development. We looked at all the costs and assessed them, and the city concluded that the cost was too great for either the city or landowners and developers to handle alone. So together, we agreed that the imposition of an offsite levy was an appropriate vehicle to ensure participation in the payment of the cost, providing the necessary infrastructure. There are a few basic principles that guide the collection of offsite levies. First, council has to pass a bylaw for collecting offsite levies, and the levies that we have in our current bylaw are for sanitary, stormwater, water, and transportation projects. The collected levies are used to pay for all or part of the capital costs of offsite levy facilities or the land that's required for any of these projects. We use stakeholder consultation in our long-term planning documents, such as the city's utility and transportation master plans, to help determine offsite projects and their costs. Offsite levies are allocated based on the principle of benefiting parties, and rates are determined on a proportionate share of each project's cost. There are a number of factors which will impact offsite levy rates, and these include construction and land costs, the amount of net development area available, timing of development, interest rates, and the number of front-ended projects being considered, and finally, the number of projects needed to support growth and development. Under the city's offsite levy bylaw, the offsite levy projects and rates must be reviewed no less than every third year. However, the offsite levy model and rates are updated annually in order to prepare the offsite levy annual report for council. This annual report details what infrastructure has been constructed and its costs, estimated construction costs for the projects that still have to be built, front-ending party payments, the amounts of offsite levies collected, and any amounts of any offsite levy reserves. And then last year, we updated the bylaw in March and August. The city's offsite levy bylaw states that all undeveloped lands are subject to offsite levies, regardless of whether it is to be developed for commercial, industrial, institutional, community, or residential uses. During the bylaws development, it was decided that a flat rate for intensity would be applied to all developable lands, with the exception of lands to be dedicated for arterial roads, environmental reserve, and municipal reserve. And at the request of the development community, the city also removed the lands to be dedicated as stormwater PULs. So when project costs are first established, the city relies on the estimates provided in the UMP and TMP. Over time, as newer, more detailed project information is obtained, those costs are refined. So the city committed to completing a review of project estimates in 2021, and this was to ensure the best available information is included in the model. The water and transportation projects have been completed, and some sanitary and storm projects were also updated. But we are currently waiting for the UMPs for the sanitary and storm to be completed, so we probably see some further refinement in updates to the projects in 2023. So some of the highlights from 2022 are the new rates provide update for realized construction costs in 2021. New rates include some updated project cost estimates based on pre-design and design work. We anticipate the reserve balance will earn an interest rate of about 0.9%. This is based on our short-term average rate of return, and this does continue to be lower than an average year, but is consistent with what we have seen since the pandemic started. The reserve shortfall will be charged interest of about 3.48%, and this is based on the loans to local authorities' 20-year debenture rate. And the city is seeing increases in the interest rate it is being charged for debentures, so this will impact our borrowing abilities and project costs when the city is the front-ending party. The number of offsite levy reference areas has increased from forty-two to eighty-three. The 2022 offsite levy bylaw includes lands annexed from Sturgeon County as of January 1st this year. Not all the offsite levy reference areas are sequential, and this is the result of not all of the lands considered for annexation being included in the final annexation application and subsequent approval. And additionally, some offsite levy reference areas needed to be divided to accommodate different servicing basin boundaries. So when we calculate the remaining net development area, the model only considers lands that have yet to be developed within the city boundary and have not previously paid offsite levies. The remaining net development area is reflective of what is in the new model. The estimated timeframe for lands to be developed in the newly annexed lands was derived from conceptually delineated areas shown in maps utilized in the offsite levy review component of the annexation analysis. So it is anticipated that these figures will be further refined over time as land use planning progresses and becomes more detailed within those annexed areas. And you may also notice that values don't always equal 100, and this is just attributed to bounding and formulas that are contained in the offsite levy model. All remaining net development area is assigned to projected year of development in the offsite levy model. So planning assistance providing this estimate, which is updated on an annual basis. They'll look at which project subdivisions have executed development agreements that year, and they'll consider what they expect other approved subdivisions to start construction. They consider redistricting applications, which may be in the process or recently approved. They will look at whether an area is part of an area structure plan, or if there's a pending ASP application coming forward. And finally, they'll look at their long-term planning growth scenarios to best predict when and where a development will occur. It's recognized that the accuracy of estimation for timing of development deteriorates as the process does take on a bit of a best guess scenario, the further into the future you look. And I think this is why it's important that we look at these numbers annually, and we update them with the new data as it becomes obtained. The 25-year development timeframe focuses developers' costs today more so on the infrastructure that benefits development today and less so on infrastructure that will be built in the future. So in addition to considering what lands will be developed and when, staging will also factor in when infrastructure is going to be built. The current offsite levy rates, the rates calculated before staging is applied, assume all of the offsite levy infrastructure projects will be built immediately, all the lands that will be developed immediately, and therefore will collect all the required offsite levies that are needed to pay for these projects. However, this is not really reflective of how development actually occurs. So what staging does is it divides the cost of a project by 25 years and calculates an annual project cost. The model then includes a pro-rata amount in current rates based on the project's planned year of construction. So for example, if the 25-year timeframe is from this year to 2046, and a project is planned to be constructed in 2040, then the calculator would include seven years' worth of cost for that project in today's rates. So as the development timeframe extends out further in subsequent years, the amount included in the rates changes, and more project costs are gradually entered into the rates. And if a project is constructed, all of the costs are included in the rates regardless of when the land is developed. The offsite levy model contains a staging adjustment. This adjusts the offsite levy rates by taking into account inflation, when projects will be constructed, when levies will be collected, and interest impacts on reserve accounts. At times, the offsite levy reserves will not be sufficient to fund project construction, and during these times, the front-ending will be required. And when the reserve balance is in a positive position, it earns interest, and when the reserve balance is negative, so that's when we front-end of projects, the reserve is charged interest. So the reserve balance represent a point in time, and each of the offsite levy infrastructure categories is recalculated annually, so the forecasted levy account balances will net zero. The staging cost adjustment determines how much rates have to be adjusted to deal with the impacts of staging, so that at the end of the 25-year development timeframe, the reserve balances are at zero. So sometimes the staging adjustment will result in levies increasing in some categories and decreasing in others. And using the 25-year development timeframe may cause some rates to fluctuate as it was influenced by the timing of construction and introduction of more annual costs, the closer a project comes to being constructed, and how many projects have project costs outside the current 25-year development timeframe. Using a 25-year development timeframe for calculating levies does increase risk to the city as the model is underfunded until all the lands are developed and project costs are collected. Risk can be mitigated by continuing to update the model annually and by not approving construction of projects that are not within the 25-year development timeframe unless the offsite levy bylaw is updated to include these projects within the key rate, within the levy rate calculation. So prior to annexation approval, there were several projects that had portions of their project costs allocated to something called other stakeholder share. Those lands were outside the city boundary, and those lands were not included in the offsite levy. And there was a risk the city would not be able to collect all of the funds required to pay for a project. So with annexation complete, those lands and costs are now incorporated into the offsite levy calculation. Historical project expenditures that were previously assigned to other stakeholder share have been updated and moved to the offsite levy share. This impacted reserve account calculations and influenced rates this year. We'll note that the water and transportation basins are single-service basins, while the sanitary and storm basins are project-specific servicing basins. There were changes made to the sanitary infrastructure category for this year as a result of project design work undertaken in the north part of the city. We've seen changes being made to two projects. So Project Two, which is our was our sanitary lift station, that's been removed and combined with Project Three to utilize a section of gravity trunk and a siphon. The estimated project cost was updated to reflect the opinion of probable cost determined during preliminary design work, and the project was renamed the Northeast Gravity Trunk and Siphon. Project Three was removed as it was combined with Project Two. Project costs, which were previously assigned to lands outside the city, are now included as an offsite levy cost. And Project Eight still has some estimated construction costs associated with it, as the project still, the final project costs haven't been finalized. And all of these factors influence the moderate increase in sanitary offsite levies. So and as a utility master plan is completed for the lands within the newly annexed area, it is anticipated that additional sanitary projects will be added to the offsite levy model. The city is currently working on a review of its sanitary utility master plan for lands within the previous city boundary, but no changes to the projects have been made to date. Currently, we have just under $75 million remaining to be collected for sanitary offsite levies, and of that, 72.6 million is within the current 25-year development timeframe. For 2022, the overall project costs are actually $4 million less than last year, and should be noted that 28.4 million has been removed from other stakeholder share and is part of the offsite levy program now. There were a few changes made to the stormwater infrastructure category for 2022. Project costs, which were previously assigned to lands outside the city, are now included as offsite levy costs, and this influenced their increases in stormwater offsite levy rates. So what I want meaning by that is when we had other stakeholder share amounts, the stormwater reserve thought we had a positive balance of about $930,000. So when the costs were all added in by the start of 2021, that reserve actually had a negative balance of about $400,000. So this is actually a more accurate picture of where the reserves were really at, as we had reimbursed the front-ending parties for all the work completed where we could, even if the model didn't track it as a cost to be included in the offsite levy calculation. So the model calculation goes back into the historical numbers and recalculates the reserve balance each year and corrects when it previously applied an interest earned calculation and replaces it with an interest charged amount. So as a as in the sanitary program, we'll also be doing an update to the utility master plan in the newly annexed areas, and we do anticipate that there may be some more projects discovered after that's completed. We also anticipate that once the Carrot Creek Master Drainage Plan is finalized and submitted to the provincial government for approval, there may be some changes to the some of the existing stormwater projects. Currently, we have $75.7 million remaining to be collected for stormwater offsite levies. Of that, $42.6 million is within the current 25-year development timeframe. For 2022, the overall project costs are about $5 million less than last March. But $40.8 million has been removed from other stakeholder share and is part of the offsite levy program now. There were several changes made to the water infrastructure category for this year. As a result of an update to the Water Utility Master Plan, it was determined there were projects that could be eliminated, relocated, or split into smaller stages. The 2021 Water UMP has proposed a better plan to support growth than what was planned previously. By consolidating our new reservoir infrastructure in the north closer to where growth is occurring, it allows the city to better better leverage its existing water supply infrastructure and reduces the transmission infrastructure that is needed to support growth. And all of these factors influence the substantial decrease in water offsite levies. The following projects were either eliminated or renamed and relocated as their function remained the same. So Project One, which was the Southwest Reservoir, was eliminated, and Project Seven, Eight, Eleven, and Twelve were all renamed. So as I just showed, the South Reservoir has been eliminated. So because the offsite levy rates were collecting levies for both the South and North reservoirs, any levies collected to date for the South Reservoir were allocated to the North Reservoir as it will be the next reservoir constructed. I want to point out that neither reservoir was collecting the entire cost of the project, as both projects had an allocation of costs attributed to other stakeholder shares. We had some other changes made to reservoirs. So Project Two was originally planned to be about 61,000 cubic meters. Its size and cost estimate were adjusted as the expansion project of the reservoir is becoming a new project to keep construction costs separate due to the length of time before the expansion will be required. The UMP also identified an additional reservoirs required in the northwest area of the city. So what was originally anticipated to be one large reservoir will become three projects in two reservoir locations. And Project Seventeen, which is the Sturgeon Reservoir, is a new project. The design and rebuild of the Sturgeon Reservoir will result in additional new 1,000 cubic meters of storage capacity as this storage can be used to delay the construction of the North Reservoir for a short time and be used to support new growth. This portion of the project is being allocated to the offsite levy program. Currently, we have $85.4 million remaining to be collected for water offsite levies, and of that, $25.7 million is within the current 25-year development timeframe. For 2022, the overall project costs are $24.7 million less than last year, and $37.7 million has been removed from other stakeholder share. There were several changes made to the transportation infrastructure category for this year. The 2022 offsite levy bylaw includes the addition of five new connector roadway projects. One existing project had project costs re-associated with it. Cost estimates for several projects were updated. Project costs, which were previously signed to lands outside the pre-2022 city boundary, are now included as an offsite levy cost, and all of these factors influence the substantial increase in roads' offsite levy rates. This year's update proposes to add five new connector roadways projects, although three of the projects do not have any estimated project costs assigned to them currently, as more project details are required. The two projects with costs and allocations assigned to them are Villanov Road and Range Road 260. Project Ten, which is Metta View Drive, had project costs re-associated with it, as portions of this road are expected to be upgraded and expanded to support development. as portions of this road are expected to be upgraded and expanded to support development. Cost estimates for several projects were updated based on utilizing roundabouts, the preferred intersection control, and to reflect updated construction costs that have been increasing over the last few years. Project costs, which were previously assigned to lands outside the city, are now included as an offsite levy cost. I did want to break down the costs that have resulted in the offsite levy transportation increase. $26.5 million can be attributed to the new connector roads, and this amount does not include the portions of the project costs which are allocated to the city. Just over $54 million can be attributed to project cost updates. This amount also includes if a project has had increases in its actual construction costs and if a new debenture has been taken out, because if it does, the cost of the debenture interest is now included in the total project costs. $3.9 million from other stakeholder share has been added, and those were for costs from Vaness Road upgrades. And $12.6 million is an increase to the amount of project costs allocated to lands currently outside the 25-year development timeframe, and those costs are not included in the current offsite levy calculation. So currently, $240 million is remaining to be collected for transportation offsite levies, and of that, $212 million is within the current 25-year development timeframe. For 2022, the overall project costs are $101.6 million more than last year, and $3.9 million has been removed from other stakeholder share and is part of the offsite levy program now. Combined offsite levy rates for sanitary stormwater and transportation are different for each property depending on the sanitary and storm basins. Combined offsite levies for all properties saw an increase between almost $11,000 and $61,000 per hectare. And I didn't provide any averages because they really don't provide accurate information due to the different benefiting areas and the number of projects they contribute to. What we did see was that the largest increase are in areas where previous project costs were allocated to other stakeholder share as project expenditures were adjusted this year to allocate costs to the offsite levy share, which also influenced those reserve balance calculations, and those projects' costs are now allocated to land that is expected to develop within 25 years. So overall, the offsite levy program is valued at just over $700 million. And to date, developers in the city have constructed just over $216 million worth of that infrastructure. So I think it's important to recognize the commitment we are making to support growth and development in the city. And we all know that last year was a busy year for development. So as of December 31st of this year, or 2021, we had almost $54 million in front-ending parties waiting to be reimbursed. And so today, if authorized by council, we will be able to reimburse parties almost $8 million in accordance with council policy, and that will leave just under $46 million in front-ending costs still needing to be paid out. So in addition to authorizing the reimbursements to front-ending parties for offsite levy infrastructure construction, council is also being asked to consider two other items. Firstly, council is being asked to add undeveloped connector roadways into the offsite levy bylaw. So when the city implemented the Complete Streets program, the past design philosophy in which a single roadway design is applied to all scenarios based on its transportation-related classification was eliminated. So the city's transportation system bylaw now uses the roadway types from Complete Streets, where boulevards, crosstowns, and connectors are arterials. Based on this update, there are five additional connector roads in the transportation system bylaw, which will require urbanization and are not currently offsite levy projects. The city received a request from some developers to include Villeneuve Road and Range Road 260 into the offsite levy program. If the city were to add those two projects into the offsite levy program as they have now been classified as connector roadways, for consistency, all connector roadways should be added to the offsite levy program. Secondly, council is being asked to allow the CIO to develop and implement a pilot program wherein owners would have up to 30 days after a development agreement is executed to pay any required offsite levies in full and in accordance with any other requirements under the offsite levy bylaw. In the event a subdivision was not required, the offsite levy payment would be a condition of the development permit. The Offsite Levy Working Group submitted a request to the city to make offsite levy payments payable 30 days after the city executes a development agreement. Currently, under the Offsite Levy Bylaw, the payment must be received before the city will execute the DA. So in principle, administration is not opposed to making offsite levies payable within 30 days from execution of the DA as long as that payment is also made in the same calendar year as when the DA is executed. Administration does need time to further investigate what changes would need to be made to our DA and offsite levy bylaw to facilitate this on a permanent basis. So administration would like to utilize a pilot program as a means for testing this initiative and to determine the level of administrative time required to incorporate this additional step into the DA process. There would also be conditions added to new subdivision approvals, which would stipulate that an endorsement could not be applied for until after the offsite levy payment was received in full. There are other municipalities within the region that have similar or other offsite levy deferment payment options. Administration is only considering a 30-day for full payment option. The city has a robust offsite levy program, and we have well-established development processes and policies. So many of the other municipalities from the examples or suggestions submitted from the Offsite Levy Working Group have smaller offsite levy programs than ours, or they don't have an offsetting program, or they just follow the City of Edmonton processes and policies to guide their community development. So administration would like to pilot this initiative to ensure payments are received as outlined in the pilot program, which would not extend past December 31st, 2024. The program will contain early termination parameters in the event the program is deemed unsuccessful or problematic. So thank you for allowing me to present council today. That's probably more than I talk in most years. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
It was good. Thank you.
I'm just gonna stop.
Councilor Mackay has a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm so glad that you understand all of this. The estimated project cost projections, what I'm referring to are for those projects that already have cost estimates. As we know, we're moving into some unprecedented times and some challenges with cost estimates. How does this, like, how do we get accounting for that in relation to the existing cost estimates? How do they get adjusted or applied to the OSL bylaw? Or do they, or do they get worked out next year?
No, so we try to keep a pretty good eye on things like that. We try to keep our estimates. I don't, I don't want to say high because that will, that's not what I mean, but we try to be conservative in our estimates. And then as we get better information, we detail it. But then, we also recognize that because we, so sometime, because there's so many projects as well, sometimes a little bit of averaging will work out because if one year, you might be collecting for a project that hasn't been built yet, but there's costs for that project, and then the next year, if we have to adjust, there's always that little bit of wiggle room where it kind of corrects itself, if that makes any sense, until you actually know the costs. But I don't know if I answered that very well for you. I apologize.
Well, no, I'm just concerned in relation to the fact that we can make adjustments or we can actually reflect the impacts of our current environment in relation to some of the, you know, the extreme demands that are facing the world nowadays, whether it's pandemic recovery or foreign Europe. I mean, they're obviously going to have some impacts. I mean, particularly if you hear some of the threats that, you know, oil will bounce up to $300 a barrel, and what's the impact on asphalt, right? So that's going to throw all of Dean's calculations right out the window. So I mean, as long as there's a method of adjusting it and that it seems to be effective, then I'm, I just was curious more than anything.
Yeah, and especially in as soon as you build something and have an actual cost, that time, the 25-year development timeframe is like you only have 25 years to pay for it. So as soon as you've actually spent something, then it also sets that cost in stone as well.
Yeah, no, challenges. So can you tell me on the pilot project, why is the OSL working group advocating? Is it primarily because that's kind of the predominant method throughout the region? Or is it, what are the advantages and disadvantages?
Um, I think for them, the advantage also is timing. So from what they've expressed, sometimes their banks are not as responsive to their requests as they would like them to be. So with our shortened construction timeframe, it gives them 30 days to be working while there's also getting their bank to finalize their money because they do have to present their executed development agreements to their banks and things like that. So sometimes I think the bank is looking for a little more security to ensure that they've received that permission to move forward with construction.
Thank you. I was just curious as to, I mean, I'm also curious as to why it seems like we're always lagging. One, I mean, what was the, you know, I'm just kind of curious as to see lately, whether it was this presentation or a previous presentation, it always seems that other communities have adopted some of these practices prior to us. So I mean, that's not something, I wasn't nor of a question, it was more of an observation, Tanya.
In this case, I would say that we probably have a more robust offsite levy program than a lot of other municipalities. So I would say that maybe we have a little more experience. So I wouldn't say we're lagging. I just think we have a bigger program than a lot of people, so we may have been a little more cautious and making, you know, ensuring that the, there is, you know, the program is funded appropriately.
Yeah, no, I don't get my terminology mixed up with criticism. I mean, I think that there's certainly some value in diligence and do, and make sure that we, that we're, the rest. I'm just more of an observation. So the lagging was my term, so.
I don't want to say I'm risk averse, but that might be better.
You all good? Counselor Killig.
Um, thank you for the presentation, just as background to help in my understanding. In the background, it said the MGA would allow us to collect for libraries, police, rec centers. But it looks like we've chosen not to do that, even though those facilities would benefit all developers and residents in those areas once they're built out. There, you can't build without a fire station, I think. It would be, wouldn't be a good idea. Similar question around, we've excluded stormwater ponds out of the calculation, and yet, storm, and storm is a small portion. I know it's small dollar amount, but stormwater ponds support all developers. We can build smaller pipes and their homes that they build don't get flooded. So what's the background in terms of excluding or choosing not to include those two items in offsite levies?
Sure. So the first part, I think, has been a more of a philosophical decision at this point. I know that we are starting to, from an administrative standpoint, discuss those things, and we hadn't received any direction from council at this point on moving forward with those. So we're starting to look forward to maybe be the more proactive and bring it back to council, maybe, to discuss it. With the storm ponds themselves, that's, they don't actually, they're not excluded from the rates. So what, the development community, when they presented it to us, was they had challenging, or they were challenged to get financing that, like, they couldn't easily recoup their costs for a storm pond when they're paying levies for that land. So what they asked was, could they not pay levies on that? But with recognition that by taking out developable land, you're actually raising your rates. So they pay a slightly higher rate on those other lots or other lands so that they can recoup their costs, that they can easily track their costs, I guess, that are recoverable to them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I was viewing it in a different way, but you clarified that for me. Thank you. Just the, are we in sync with the region around us in both libraries, police, rec centers, and stormwater? Is that the way, say Edmonton does it to, I just want to make sure we're competitive and?
Okay, so right now, the, so the only, as far as I'm aware, only Calgary and Edmonton are collecting for fire halls from their offsite levy programs. Calgary had their setup a couple of years ago. They were very proactive and they have a very strong relationship with their development community, and I'm not sure of all the thing, but they were set up earlier. Edmonton is just starting to look at that. I'm not sure if they've actually implemented theirs yet or not. And that was just for fire halls. As far as I'm aware, nobody is doing the libraries, the police stations, or the rec centers yet with, it's not like your typical infrastructure here, like, so you need a sanitary pipe, that's easily shown. If you want to do something with your community rec center, you need a bunch of background information that shows you can only attribute the costs that are related to growth. So you can't just say, you know, unless you were going to say, nobody can use this rec center except the people that live in this area that have paid for this, you couldn't say that they would be responsible for all of the capital costs. So there will be a, there would be a split, and you need to have documents and like reports that show what that split would be before you can actually make it in as part of your offsite levy program.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Tanya, for the presentations. Always an interesting insight into the community. I, it's interesting this time because, of course, the annexation is now gone through, and there's all of this new land that is incorporated into the city. Over the past years, we've always heard that our offsite levies are high because the benefiting areas in the land is, is, didn't have much land to attribute the costs over. Now we've got all this land, and yet we've got, you know, 80-some or 90-some benefiting areas. I, can you just maybe give me a 101 on how you define a benefiting area? Like I see, it looks like a section of land is one, one block, is?
Yes. So the actual areas were defined by, as part of the annexation analysis when they were using that. So when Corvus was helping the consultant develop that. But typically, yes, those squares are quarter sections that you're seeing. So, and sometimes though, when I mentioned earlier was I had to, depending on what the servicing basin is, so sometimes depending on what the topography is of a site, you might actually have one quarter section, but some of the land would be draining one way and some water would be draining another way. So you would actually have to split those, that into two bases because they'd be contributing to two different projects. So that's why sometimes you'll see some strange shapes on the model, and that's just to work with, like, it's reflective of what the actual ground looks like. So it's showing the servicing basin capacity. And then some of them too were based, and the older part of the city were based on the river lots as well. So that's why they're, you'll see, so there's not, but normally, yeah, it's just a quarter section. And I know you didn't completely ask the question, but I'll give you a little background. So we, with the 25-year development timeframe, you're not going to have all of the land come in and develop within 25 years. So you have to plan for the projects you need that are going to support that development. So that's how that 25-year kind of rolling development timeframe moves along so that those projects, that those lands are going to need in the annexed lands, because they're going to need different infrastructure for the most part than the lands that are developing right now. So as you get closer to those, you'll see rates in those areas changing and because those projects are going to come on too.
Is that a rolling 25 years? Because I'm assuming that the 25 years serves to reduce the offsite levy portion. Is that correct? But the offsite levy?
It gives you 25 years to collect it. So it's kind of, in the old days, like when we didn't have that, like, so prior to last year, when we went from the 35-year development timeframe to the 25-year, the way it kept moving was it kept moving every 20, every year. And then, but you would never get projects off the books because you would, if you have a single basin and you're saying, so basically, you would have to collect all of the money from the land to pay for all of the projects. And so it was just, so 25 years is reflective and gives you an actual chance to get some projects off of the books, and then it completes them. Those levies are all collected, the projects are fully paid for. And then it completes them. Those levies are all collected. The projects are fully paid for. Then as it gets closer to other projects, those developers are going to start paying more towards those projects. So I think it's, it's considered to be a fairer system.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. It's, it's always interesting to hear you. Not sure I understand it all, but certainly better off. Thank you.
Counselor Bermansky.
Well, through the mayor to Tanya, I'm assuming some part of my question was answered through the other counselors' questions. But I, I guess the need for this project was because, you know, the different individuals had difficulty in paying. Is thirty days, if they end up past the thirty days in this pilot project, what happens? Are they charged interest? Is there going to be some hold on some, what would, what would happen in that case?
So we haven't actually started the development of the project yet. Obviously, we're waiting for council's approval. But we have been, you know, discussing the ideas. And yes, we actually think there would be, it will be fairly strict because there are some pretty strong implications if we don't receive the money because we have to pay for these projects. So there would be, if, if someone missed their deadline, they would be, there would be an administrative cost right away. There would be interest turned back or charged back. And then, like I said, there would also be, if it became problematic, where if we were seeing that we weren't receiving funds in the time that was specified, there might be an option where we would probably want to, you know, terminate the program if it's not successful. I don't anticipate that, but you still want to have everything in place just in case.
Okay. And when were the funds due prior to this, you know, or when do they do now?
Before you sign the development agreement. So what would happen is we send the development agreement out to the developer. They send, they sign it, they send it back with their offsite levies, their security deposit, their proof of insurance, things like that. City makes sure they have their engineering drawings approved so that we know what they're actually constructing. That forms part of the DA too. Then we execute the DA on our end and they're good to start construction then.
So the only benefit is we're just being the good guy extending the time essentially?
Yep, thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Killik has another question.
Yeah, thank you. Ray given drive, my favorite subject, other than grass cutting. The, the rate given drive costs, they're in three stages. There, we're front-ending the, the money. So we, we borrow the money. We front-ended it. The offsite levy amount shown in the documentation, and I hate to say it's, I think it's page one eighty-four, something like that of the documentation. It shows fifty percent. So is, is that because we are anticipating the provincial government will provide the other fifty percent in twenty twenty-five, I think it is, or is that the way the math kind of follows?
No. So what, in theory, that would be how it would work if we were, but in this case, in the city's offsite levy program now, only the first two lanes of Ray Given Drive are in the offsite levy program. So the developers are paying for fifty percent of the first two lanes that were built previously. So that was a council decision back. Predates me. And so the argument for why it's, because the question has been asked, well, why are the expansion lanes not in the offsite levy program now? So this goes back to what I was saying where when you have a program where you've sort of spread that cost out over years and years and years, you can't use the argument to say, we need two more lanes because the roadway is built in full, but they're still paying for the first two lanes. You would have to actually say that growth actually only contributed maybe twenty-five percent and the city should have paid seventy-five percent or something to that effect. And then you would switch the costs over and then you would have to change the projects and then add them in that way. So that's probably not really answering your question, but that's really what's in the offsite levy model now.
Okay, so sort of. I think I followed. Might need a follow-up afterwards, but offline. But is that similar context then for Vilnav Road as well in the seventy-thirty split?
Yes, so anytime.
The same thing.
Yeah, so some, anytime you see a percentage that's not one hundred percent to development. That, so sometimes, like you said, prior to annexation, some of those costs were split between other stakeholders share. And they were, but other time, anytime you see a city share, that means that there's something the city's benefiting from as well. And so we have to pay a contribution. The Villanov Road, because it's been our, the reports that we had showed that it was seventy percent of existing traffic were benefiting from using this roadway as well. Thirty percent of that could be contributed to growth. And so that's why only thirty percent of those costs are in the offsite levy model.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
All right, lots of good questions, guys. Counselor Broadhead's jumping in to make a motion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that bylaw thirteen slash twenty-two to be an amendment ten to offsite bylaw. I'd be bylaw thirty slash twenty thirteen be read a first time.
Excellent. I'll accept that. Any opening comments?
This is a, an annual update to the bylaw and Tanya does such a wonderful job in presenting a very complex activity that the city undergoes to help development within our community and certainly appreciate her her presentation today.
All right, anyone else on debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Second reading?
I moved that bylaw thirteen slash twenty-two be read a second time. Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
All right, anyone else? Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Go ahead, Ken.
That unanimous consent be given for consideration, the third and final reading of bylaw thirteen slash twenty-two.
Excellent. Call for the vote. All right, voting's closed. We have unanimous consent to go to third reading, Counselor Broadhead.
Move that bylaw thirteen slash twenty-two be read a third and final time.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that's unanimous. There's two follow-up ones there. Counselor Broadhead, are you okay with those?
You bet. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that seven point nine million in the current offsite levy receipts held by the city be allocated and administered as indicated in twenty-twenty-one offsite levy receipt reconciliation consistent with approved council policy C dash P and E dash oh eight provided as an attachment to the March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two agenda report entitled Offsite Levies, Twenty-Twenty-Two Annual Report and Bylaw Update, Bylaw Thirteen Slash Twenty-Two.
Right, you just read the next one and two, we'll vote on them both together. Read the next one.
I'm sorry?
I said five and six we can do together if you want.
Oh, you, oh, you want me to read six too? Okay, fair enough. That the chief administrative officer be directed to develop and implement a pilot program to allow owners as defined under the offsite levy bylaw thirty slash twenty thirteen up to thirty days after a development agreement is executed or development permit is issued to pay any required offsite levies in full and in accordance with any other requirements under the offsite levy bylaw thirty slash twenty thirteen. This pilot program is not to extend past December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
All right, any comments on those two motions?
I don't have a whole lot of commentary. I thought both of them were explained by Ms. Dorian.
Yep, I agree. Any other comments on these? Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. That was excellent. We are now moving into ten point one, which was on consent and now pulled. So I don't know if there's any administrative presentation on this one. No? So Counselor Bermansky, you pulled this off. Do you have any questions?
You're on mute, shall we?
Sorry, I did pull it because I didn't have the history on it. So I, my understanding is it was approved in two thousand seventeen and then two thousand nineteen. I don't know what happened in twenty twenty-one, which would have been again an additional two years. So, and the second part of the questions I have are, we pay a lot into the transit boards already. And I don't know why they don't have their own budget for this kind of stuff, why it's brought back again to council. So I'd just like clarification on those few things.
I'll let you go with the first one at least.
Yeah, thank you, worship, and to Counselor Bermansky. It was in the budget through twenty nineteen and it was in the budget in twenty twenty. However, the conference was canceled due to, due to the pandemic. And again, in twenty twenty-one, they can't, the, the conference did not go ahead because of the pandemic. And because of a house cleaning item or housekeeping item, administration did not carry that amount forward to cover the last term of this, this amount. So it should have been in the budget for twenty twenty-two as well. But it was something that was an oversight on the administrative part. So that's basically that history.
All right, and I just peeked over to see if Counselor Broadhead wanted to answer the second part of your question, Counselor Bermansky, because QDA is a separate organization that's really separate from the city. So Wes has been on the board for a long time. I'll let him answer.
Fair enough, and, and great question, Counselor Bermansky. It's a, so the Canadian Urban Transit Association is an industry association that represents public transit within Canada and it's made up of municipal members. It's made up of, of industry members. And, and quite honestly, a small portion of it is made up of, of elected officials that are representing communities that actually provide public transit services. And what the association does, of course, is it advocates on behalf of, of public transit and the needs of municipalities within the, within the country. How I got involved, of course, is that I was part of the, of the committee. The Transit Board Members Committee, which is, is a committee of elected officials from across Canada. I eventually was elected to be chair. And then from there, I was elected to be on the executive of the, of the association itself. It's all, all board members and either whether they're municipal employees, whether they're elected officials or whether they're industry representatives, they're all volunteer. So there's, there's no compensation or anything like that. And they're asked as a result of their membership to participate. Now, if you're on the executive, you're asked to, to participate by attending two in-person conferences a year. And there are five, five events that are held for the executive. Four quarterly meetings and what they call a, a national advocacy day, transit day in Ottawa, where you meet all the federal ministers. So that's part of what it's all about. You can talk about its effectiveness. I mean, the QDA was in town a couple of weeks ago talking to the Minister of Transportation here in Alberta. And, you know, shortly thereafter, Alberta announced that they were going to match the federal fund grant in support of public transit. And that was a result of the executive getting together and, and defining an advocacy strategy and then deploying their people appropriately. So I would suggest it's, it's a, it's like EPCM, National Association, but specific to public transit alone. So that's, that's what.
Okay, and one other question. So would that ten thousand cover two conferences or one or the four?
It all depends where it is. And what they try to do is they distribute it across the nation. So the one in, in the first of April is in Quebec City. They've held them in Edmonton, Calgary, Saskatoon. So those ones, of course, would be a lot cheaper when they decide to go to Halifax, for example, which they do probably every six or so years. It's a little bit more expensive. I don't have the roster in front of me where they are, but this spring it's in Quebec City. So when you travel a little bit, it costs you a bit more. When you don't travel as far, hopefully it'll last. Ten thousand is what the council has always approved and it's always been enough. So I haven't used it all in, in the years that I've been on it, so.
Okay, so the ten thousand is a maximum then?
Yeah, fair enough.
Thank you.
Counselor Hughes.
I just, I'm just going to bring it forward, the motion, but it would suggest that we use the stabilization reserve instead of the council contingency. We, because of the money coming back from transit, I believe there's going to be an influx coming into that as well as the police reimbursement, I believe. So we'll have, we'll easily have the ten thousand in there. And the council contingent is only fifteen thousand. So I'm just suggesting whoever does bring forward the motion to change the funding source because it's pretty early in the year and we don't know if we need that for something else in the council contingents.
So you're suggesting, so your mic is intermittent, I would say, Counselor Hughes. So you're suggesting that instead of.
Change the funding source.
Do we change it to stabilization? What have we done in the past?
I'd have to go back and look where we funded it in the past. The only reason we recommended council contingency is just that that fund actually hasn't been used a lot in the last several years. So it was just a way to utilize that funding that's already budgeted for, but stabilization fund would be fine as well.
Are you proposing an amendment, Counselor Hughes?
Well, we haven't brought it forward yet, right? So I'm just suggesting whoever does.
Okay. Any other questions? I see none. Anyone want to bring forward a motion? Counselor McCutcheon.
If we're going to make, I mean, just to be clear in relation to, because as Counselor Broadhead so eloquently identified that, I mean, it depends. I mean, some days you, or some years you'll never even come close to using ten thousand and other years you will. So maybe if we can say that up to ten thousand dollars, that way it's just clear. That doesn't preclude if you decide to take Ken to Quebec City, that we.
Doesn't cause Ted to go there.
Anyways, I, I'm just thinking, like, if we haven't accepted, Madam Mayor, that we could say that up to ten thousand.
You're, you're making the motion.
Okay, that up to ten thousand dollars from the stabilization reserve be used to cover travel and accommodations and other miscellaneous costs for Counselor Broadhead in twenty twenty-two in relation to his role as a member of the executive committee of the Canadian Urban Transit Association.
All right, accept that motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think great, great comments and great feeling. It's always, it's always good that actually we hear with some of our council members. And there's no doubt that the advocacy that this association has brought not only to our municipality but across Canada is, has been beneficial as we move forward around some of the transit initiatives. So it's nice. Actually, I would encourage Counselor Broadhead to actually give regular updates after his meetings so that actually we can hear of the initiatives and some of the progress moving forward on some of the, some of the work that the Canadian Urban Transit Association is doing. So, but I, I fully support this, Nandor.
Anyone else? I see you don't want to comment on this. Cheating you. I will, I'll just say thank you. Honestly, I mean, I know taking on these kind of roles adds workload. But there is huge benefit to the city, St. Albert, and of course, any municipality offering transit across Canada. And I appreciate you taking the time. And I appreciate you taking the time to attend these and lend our voice, the mid-sized voice to the conversation. If you need to close, councillor McKay?
No, great. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote.
You clearly pricked the president's by looks too.
Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. We are on to civic and external agency updates. Why don't I start with you, councillor Killick? Why don't I bring up the list?
Can I apologize and say I'm not ready?
You can apologize. I'll come back to you, councillor McKay. I'll bring up the list and then I-
Do you want to go through the list individually?
I'll go through the committees. That might help. Hold on.
Yeah, if you go through the list, it's individual, but I can tell you, we didn't really have any meetings.
Boards and committees. Council appointments. There we go. All right, the first one on my list is you, Alberta Capital Region Waste Water Commission.
Yeah, we just had a meeting on Friday, just went through our financial plan and also our internal auditor plan, and you'd be happy to know that everything is in order. And, and we're moving forward with some initiatives in the region, so, but pretty much it for right now.
Perfect. Next is Art Development Advisory Committee, councillor Bromanski.
So we will be meeting again this week. So this is from back in February. We discussed the statue, the missing statue replacement. We also spoke about the Fowler Park Track was finished, and there, we're debating an art project on the walls around Fowler Track. So there was some ideas thrown around for that. We talked about the public art policy a little bit more, and then we went into the, the nominations for the community recognition. So we spent quite a bit of time on that nomination, and I will have again a lot more follow-up on all of these items this week.
Awesome. It's kind of exciting. I'm looking forward to what they do at Fowler Track. All right, next, or if you're ready, councillor Killick, Community Service Advisory Committee?
I apologize.
That's okay.
I should have been better prepared, and I will be better prepared next time.
All right, you'll have to report on two months' worth of work. Councillor Jolly, I don't think you had anything on Edmonton Global, did you? Oh, no, you did go to one. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I wrote down my notes. So I was your alternate. So it was just a briefing that explored investment opportunities in the region and, and really how our strikes could be used to attract investment. They talked a little bit about the Alberta budget, but it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you for attending. EMRB, we had a committee, the whole meeting, which actually all got a briefing on from Trevor. We discussed board chair, which it looks like the board's leading towards another internally, like an elected chair, but we haven't made that decision yet. We talked about, what else? Oh, funding. We had some roundtable discussions on how to kind of advocate for more funding for EMRB, and then finally, we had a presentation on Hydrogen Hub. If anyone wants that presentation, I can share it.
I can also fill you in that the MRSP Subcommittee is meeting Friday.
Great. All right. You had Audit and Finance, councillor Broadhead?
We did, Madam Mayor. Again, we considered the, the budgets for the MRB, a number of activities. But it was a, a basic sort of bi-monthly meeting of the Audit and Finance.
Okay. So it is listed here, councillor McKay, MRSP, so I won't get it, but, no, you haven't had a meeting since we've been reappointed, right?
Our first meeting is actually coming up on Friday.
Bring it up, regional please.
I'm going to, they're going to go through a whole history of how they arrived at the different collaboratives, and I will ask that. I'll also ask about some other.
Speaking of councillor Broadhead volunteering for more roles, EMTSC, if you want to report on what's going on there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first off, we completed our boards, board strategic planning sessions, and that was facilitated both in Laduke and in Stony Plain, and was well received. It was nice to be in person. And then on Monday of this week, we presented to Edmonton City Council, myself and the CEO, and of course yourself, Madam Mayor, presented to Edmonton City Council the presentation on the activities of the commission to date. And quite honestly, we have work before us, because we got eight new councillors in the city of Edmonton, and they haven't been on this journey for the last eight or nine years that the rest of us had. So, so they had some great questions, and so as we continue to stand up the commission, we'll have to continue to keep our eyes on the prize, if you will, and make sure that we ensure that every council in the region is fully engaged in, in terms of the activity of the commission going forward. And, and that's a, that's a commitment to St. Albert Council as well as to other, the other seven councils in the region as well, so.
All right. Edmonton Salutes?
Edmonton Salutes, yes. So I, we had, we haven't had the Edmonton Salutes Committee meeting because that's on Friday. However, I also sit on the, the Membership Committee of the Edmonton Salutes, and that we just finished holding, and there was a, an extensive discussion around what the role of the municipal members were, and also the community members of the Salutes Committee. And, and by and large, we've reestablished our focus on, on just ensuring that the commission as, or the committee as a whole is really around supporting the military members within a number of our municipalities around the Edmonton region. The, the interesting thing about Edmonton Salutes is the committee itself is formed under a City of Edmonton bylaw. And so when municipal members from outside the city of Edmonton participate, there needs to be provisions within their bylaw to allow us to function appropriately, and that's now been cleaned up. So it's all good. We still have some more work to do in that regard, but it's been an interesting journey to make sure diverse voices from around the region speak on behalf of the military.
Thank you for that. Councillor Hughes, has Edmonton Waste Minimization Advisory Committee met?
I still have not gotten anything, and I've asked multiple times. Councillor McKay, if you're still getting invites, if you can send them to me, that would be awesome, because I haven't had anything still.
Do you even have contact information?
Uh, no, I do have contact information, and I can forward it, but they will, it's usually a government official that will contact you. Either that or they're throwing them in the waste.
Well, I'm eagerly anticipating it, yeah.
Oh, good.
We have not had an emergency management advisory committee. Councillor Killick, you ready for environment advisory?
Yes, I am. My apologies. So we met on February 24th. We had a very interesting virtual whiteboard session on climate adaptation challenge, which the city is participating in. Interestingly, when we talked about our 10% funding for emergencies, this was a, an item where we discussed climate events like heat wave, wildfire smoke, freezing rain events, wildland fire, and increased risk from cold snaps and, and needing space heating. So we worked through that as, on a virtual whiteboard, got everybody's input. This builds on the input from staff, and that is being taken away by the, the team looking at that under One Sky Foundation. And they'll be bringing back continued updates on that through, through the environmental team. We also received and reviewed a, a person's name, yet to be announced as it goes through the process for the community recognition program. It was very well received and received 100% unanimous support to move that forward, that name forward to the final selection committee.
Thank you. Excellent. Let's see what's next. Sorry. Homeland Housing. How's your job? You've been busy over there.
Oh, man. Yeah, I've been chatting with our ED today as well earlier. So we, we had our first government governance committee meeting of, of the year, so this year, that committee is really only focused on the, the regular CAO update. I apologize, my puppy just started barking the second I started talking. So that's going well. We also held a board orientation for, for the whole board, but it was particularly important for our new members just to, they've now got their feet wet with, with a few meetings and, and really getting that, that headfirst dive in. We're also starting to respond to the unexpected announcement that competency-based boards will be required for provincial housing bodies. So I did attend the provincial, the information session or feedback session. I, I believe a member of staff attended that as well. So just learning about what the government expects, which will be extremely challenging for our already large board. So I'm really looking forward to hearing kind of feedback from the province about, you know, if that engagement is going to, to change their direction. Yeah, so that's busy.
I did get a email from chief of staff or somebody from the ministry to meet with me about the change to competency boards. They wanted to meet with me like today. Need a little bit more notice, so I'm hoping early April we'll be able to have that conversation, so.
That's great. Yeah, I think they're realizing that they need to start doing that engagement, so.
Yeah, and of course, it came up at, at Alberta municipalities at the, at the caucus meeting, and that was the first time Dan Dorsey had even heard of it, and so I asked for a, a report to be presented to the executive in April so we can plan and strategize. So we'll get, I'll get back to you on that.
That's great to hear. Thanks.
All right, councillor Bromanski, I don't think the intercity forum on social policy met in the last month, did they?
No, but I did do the community services advisory.
But you went to the Community Service Advisory Committee instead of councillor Killick?
I'm always on the community services. That was February 22nd, yeah.
Why do I have councillor Killick as my rebel?
I'm, I'm prime. Shelley is backup for me.
Oh, yeah, you're the alternate on that.
I just couldn't find my notes, but if councillor, if you can do an update for me, that would be awesome.
Okay, that'd be great. On that one, we did focus again on a nomination for the recognition, and we have a exciting nomination for there. It's actually a group nomination. It was also mentioned that we discussed quite a bit of the mental health issues that are going on in the city and a lot of the groups that want to work on, on those new directions. And then there was a, an update on mischief group that some of their things are getting back in order again. So that was good news for that. And then discussing again further information on the community recognition garden. And that's, it was basically more discussion on social services coming out of COVID was the main conversation. But again, there'll be an update again on that soon, so.
Okay, awesome. Thanks. You're off the hook, councillor Killick. Internal Audit Committee has not met. Policing Committee?
Yeah, policing, policing committee met last week, Tuesday, when we were away out of town, but I checked in, and really it was just a regular business. All the reports from the different chair, officer in charge, public complaint administrator, so nothing out of the know.
Okay. Quasi-judicial Recreation Cost Sharing Negotiating Committee, we have not met, but I, I can update that councillor Jolly and I did meet with Mayor Natu and councillor Como to just to talk about next steps, I guess, and we're still at a bit of an impasse with cost sharing agreements. We will be trying to schedule one more meeting, so that would be councillor Hughes and councillor Bromanski and I, so hopefully that gets scheduled right away. Councillor Hughes, next is seniors advisory committee.
Yes, and I think the meeting is tomorrow for the rec, but I know your schedule's busy, but anyway, just so you know, it's coming. Look forward to that. So you're committed to meet this month. So we, we're, we're meeting when there's an, an item to discuss, and there was nothing this month.
Okay. We all were at the IAC, so we don't want to need to report on that one. And then you're going to the Sturgeon River Water Shuttle Lines tomorrow, or Wednesday, right, councillor Killick?
Uh, yes, and our first meeting was March 2nd.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we haven't done an update since, and it seems like a long time. We did go through the process of assigning our chair from Parkland, vice chair from Warrenville. We talked about Seva Beach, getting a grant to do repairing lake remediation. We've also got grants underway for water quality monitoring, water quantity monitoring, and repairing area quality monitoring as well. So those are underway. St. Albert is prime with Melissa Logan on water quality. And very interestingly, I learned that the deepest part of Big Lake is only six feet deep.
Really?
So who knew?
I didn't know that.
So.
So I can't take my sailboat there.
Maybe, maybe your paddleboard, but definitely not your sailboat. And yes, our next meeting is coming up on Wednesday. Bit of a conflict with our downtown community meeting, so.
Okay, we'll give you a good update on the downtown meeting. And last but not least, councillor Jolly, the youth committee.
Thank you, and I know everyone here has heard it, but this group is so engaged, and it's just an absolute delight to sit with them. The, the last meeting, they had a presentation on Flourish, so kind of getting a sense of how the MDP works. And one of the things that they're doing, kind of going forward, is commenting on upcoming council decisions. So kind of went through some items that were of interest to them. One of them was interested. We, we talked about alcohol in, in parks, so getting their, their thoughts on how that fits in with St. Albert and, and possible impacts. So that was certainly interested, interesting. And the East Scooter feedback, I think I provided a, a few weeks ago when we were discussing that at, at committee.
All right. I don't know about you guys, but I like that way of doing council updates, because I, I actually learnt something in this special, like the Fowler, it was good. You guys are doing a good job of keeping notes and remembering what you talked about. So now we're into council motions. See if we can do that. First one is mine. Councillor Hughes, you're deputy mayor, right? Okay, so I'm going to pass the chair off to you.
Okay, if you want to read in your motion.
Yes, let me get to it. That administration investigate the feasibility of hosting the 55-plus or the Alberta Games either winter or summer, and bring back to council report on possible funding and governance of organization of such games by August 15, 2022.
Right, before it's, does anybody have any questions? We see nothing, so if I'm wrong, speak up. Okay, great. I'll accept your motion. Go ahead.
Councillor Killick has one.
Oh, councillor Killick, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, thank you. In, in the background, or it was a little bit confusing. One paragraph said we could, administration could do the analysis without impacting its current workload, and then a paragraph later, I think it said this would have to be fit in with all of the other priorities and that it would impact other workload. And I'm concerned that we've, we've already got administration team full looking at things like Millennium Park and our, over our rec center needs and ACA needs and park bylaws and all the other things that are, everybody knows are underway. And so I'd just like some clarity as to the two comments that were in, in the backgrounder as to whether it can be accommodated in a timely fashion or, or how it will be without impacting all the other projects.
I'll start answering, then I'll probably bring Danielle in or Diane through, through, through the chair and to councillor Killick. I believe this is, if, if we look at hosting the games in, you know, 2026, we're okay from a work perspective. If you guys want to do it in like 23 or 24, it would impact other projects. So I think that's really where that was coming in, but I'll let Dan or Danielle correct me if I'm wrong.
Through the, through the chair to councillor Killick. Actually, with the 23 or 24 games, the window of opportunity has pretty much passed us, because that's a current- Through the, through the chair to council kill it. Um, actually with the 23 or 24 games, the window of opportunity is pretty much, um, past us because that's a current they're into those discussions at this time right now, um, and bids have to be in within the next couple of weeks. We'd be looking at a future bid and we can accommodate the report to come back to council. Um, but we would look for a slight extension from the, uh, August 15th timeline to the September 30th timeline, just to allow us the time within our current work plans to achieve the work to complete the report. Sorry for the lack of clarity if that was an issue.
Well, that, that's fine. Um, and I, I was trying to go back to the original request that we received. Does, does that, did they have a specific games in mind? Like, was it the 2024 or the 2026 that they were asking for? I couldn't find that original ask that prompted this. So, um, maybe you could help clarify what, what the original request was for.
Certainly through the chair to council kill it. Um, the current request that we've just received this year is for the 24 games and that's what they're looking for bids on. But again, that bid is closing within the next month. We would be looking, um, to prepare a report that would prepare us to bid on a future games, which would be more like a 2026. And we'll compile all the information for council's consideration if they would like us to advance that work, um, in the, in the future.
Thank you. I thank you. I think that was a, an important clarification.
Great. Are there any other questions? Uh, council Jolly.
Thank you. I guess, uh, to Mayor Herron. So are you willing to change that date to September 30th?
Sure. I can, I, I do whatever administration wants to be. About that much time. Yep. So you just fix that in the motion. Okay.
Any other questions? The tiny little screen. I don't see anybody else raising a hand. So I'm going to accept your motion, Mayor Herron. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll make this quick. Honestly, um, when I asked for a feasibility, you did a lot of the work already in this background or talking about economic impact of these type of games and, um, the funding that we could potentially get and how it could be governed. But, um, so I'm not gonna debate that. I'm, I'm just really hoping we talked about it a bit at strategic planning and I think I can say this publicly. It's just trying to give back, trying to give our community something to rally behind and get excited about. It's been so long since we've done anything like this. Um, COVID has really, you know, slowed down that, that feeling that we always, that small town feel or that, that spirit of volunteerism and community that these type of games really, um, bring to our community. I, I, I was elected for both the 55 plus and the, um, Special Olympics and they were fantastic, um, additions to our community. So I, I think this would be something that is worth investigating and, you know, hopefully we could get it done maybe in 2025. So this council could be, you know, participating in it, but whatever works. Um, so yeah, if, if staff is willing to do the work, I'd love to read the report. Nothing further.
Anybody have anything else? You see somebody in your hair and like.
Yeah, no, I have hands up.
No hands up? Okay. I'm going to just, I'm going to step in and say, I think it's a great idea. Um, this is just exploring the possibilities of it. So there's nothing wrong with just kicking tires to see if it's now an option. And we need to have some stuff that will join the community together and to celebrate who we are. So, um, I think that just having this motion to explore it, I think is a great idea. That's it. Mayor Herron to close.
Nothing further.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. Yeah. Okay. Everyone's done, I'm guessing. I'm looking at Ken and he looks like he's confused. Yeah. Good. Okay. Voting closed. And if you can just tell us what the results are.
It passed unanimously.
Awesome. Great job.
Great.
I will pass the chair back to you.
Okay. Good. Cause we're going to your emotion on e-scooters. But before we do that, we have a, um, a presentation from Chris Schaefer that's been waiting patiently for many hours. And he's, he's actually paying attention because he turned his camera on. So hi, Chris. Thank you for waiting. Um, I will let you have your five minutes and, and hear what you have to say about the, the motion in front of us.
Sure. Thank you, um, mayor. I'm going to share my screen.
All right.
Please let me know if you can see the screen.
We sure can.
Perfect. I'll start.
Okay.
Thank you, council for the opportunity to speak with you now, uh, this evening. Um, I'm Chris Schaefer, VP of Government Affairs at Bird Canada. We are a shared micro mobility operator, e-scooter operator that operated in St. Albert last year and looking forward to, uh, 2022 this year as well. So with respect to the notice of motion that, uh, is before council this evening with respect to the 20 proposed 20 drop off and pickup corrals within the city and to no longer allow e-scooters to be dropped off or picked up outside of the approved locations, I believe, uh, presents significant operational challenges. So as you know, you've got an open permit system that allows, uh, an unlimited number of e-scooter companies to operate in your municipality, in addition to, um, deploying an unlimited number of e-scooters per company. So some of the operational challenges this notice of motion presents is how many e-scooters would be permitted per corral per company, particularly when new companies can join. Uh, first come, first served. So is it whoever gets the deployment out the fastest and earliest in the morning gets the scooter corral slots. And if you don't get one, you can't operate that day. What happens if a new company enters the market? Uh, do existing companies then have to reduce the number of e-scooters they are permitted to park in a corral? What happens if a new company comes in addition to the existing companies? What happens if the existing companies increase the number of e-scooters in your open permit system? What does that do for the number of permitted scooters per corral per company? What happens when a rider wants to park an e-scooter in a corral is full? There's only 20 of them. What happens when, or proposed 20 of them? What happens when there isn't a corral nearby? If an e-scooter company is only permitted a certain number of e-scooters per corral, what happens when riders park e-scooters from one company in excess to the permitted number in a corral for that company? Uh, no municipality, and I think for these obvious reasons, I've stated just now, no municipality, uh, respectfully. Uh, and Canada currently operates under the model proposed by this notice of motion, including Calgary and Edmonton and other Alberta municipalities with a scooter sharing program. I, I would recommend and suggest to council that they consider keeping the program as is and, uh, during the pilot and having staff report back uh, in the future with respect to, uh, potential changes rather than bringing in changes right now that would have, I believe, um, consequences, um, that were not contemplated, but perhaps by the, the notice of motion. Street furniture zone parking is what Alberta municipalities have started their e-scooter programs with. They permit the parking of scooters, as you know, in the street furniture zone. These are areas of the sidewalk that do not block pedestrian thoroughfare. St. Albert followed this precedent last year. Some Alberta municipalities have subsequently added additional parking options, such as physical parking infrastructure that you can see in the photos in front of you. Um, they've added these to the general street furniture zone parking model. So riders can still park in the street furniture zone sidewalks, but in key areas of the city, additional parking options exist to improve parking, um, proper parking outcomes, particularly if the built form in particular areas of the city are challenging. So this is something that, um, staff could consider. Uh, that would work in the confines of the existing model, uh, rather than introduce the notice of motion, which would really, I think, have a bunch of unintended consequences. Cities, um, have also, um, in other parts of Canada, considered what's known as preferred or digital parking spots. So these parking spots have no physical infrastructure, but can be added to e-scooter company apps to direct riders to park in quote preferred areas of the city designated by the P. So these are like essentially pre-cleared parking spots with instructions. Uh, we can also incentivize these parking, um, places that a rider would get a discount on a future trip for parking in a preferred area. These preferred parking spots are not mandatory for a rider to use, but supplementary to permitted street furniture zone parking and any potential physical parking infrastructure. Again, they are designed to assist riders make better parking decisions in key areas of the city. So I'll wrap up.
Oh, you're done. I was going to say your five minutes is coming up. So perfect.
I was just going to thank you, uh, Chair Mayor. I, I was just going to wrap up by saying, um, that those motion presents, I believe, uh, several unintended consequences. And, and I would encourage you to consider moving forward with the pilot as it exists currently. Thank you. I look forward to any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Schaefer? Ken Mackay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. I really appreciate your patience and sitting through. And I know you say you do this often, but I appreciate you, um, waiting till it was on the agenda. Um, and you said in Alberta, there's no implementation of these, uh, parking corrals. Um, are you aware, are they in other municipalities, uh, in, um, in Canada?
And through your chair to, to council. So, uh, as I mentioned, uh, in some of those photos in my presentation, so for example, Edmonton has, um, what's known as parking corrals, the painted box with or without ballards. But it's not what the notice of motion here proposes. The notice of motion proposes 20 of those and only that. You can only deploy scooters to those 20 spots as a company and riders can only park their e-scooter in one of those 20 boxes, which presents a, a bunch of unintended consequences, as I outlined in my remarks. The difference in Edmonton, uh, for example, and Calgary that has these as well as they're supplementary. So riders can still park in the street furniture zone of the sidewalk, like was the model last year in St. Albert. They've simply added supplementary parking corrals to the, um, available parking options. So you now have in those cities, street furniture zone parking broadly permitted plus parking corrals. The notice of motion here says we're only going to have 20 parking corrals and nothing else.
So part, uh, part of the concern that we're, I mean, I'm recognizing that we only started this in September of last year and we only really had it up and running for a very, very short time. Um, I, you know, um, my con- comment and concern would be, I don't have, um, um, enough information as to where these things are, are, are being left. And I think that's some of the concern is, is, um, a lot of the e-scooters potentially were left abandoned and, and creating an unsightly kind of uncomfortable look. I mean, and I realize uh, e-scooter companies had 48 hours to remove them, respond and remove them and put them back or pick them up. But I mean, if, if we implement, I mean, I mean, 20 wouldn't be enough, but could you foresee if this worked if we had 30 or 40? And where would they have to be? They would have to be all along that usable area that we all permit e-scooters. Correct? Is that a logistical problem as well as the, um, bullet points you've identified for, uh, problems?
Through your chairs. Thank you for the question, council. So I would agree. It's still a problem. So, so the, the challenge here is a few things. So I'll, I'll, I'll touch base on what scooter companies do to address the concern. Then I'll, I'll address the, the challenge of even 30 or 40 of these corral. So there's a bunch of things we'll do and I'll keep it short for sake of time. We have street patrol teams in uniform that are out patrolling, addressing these issues in real time. We have, um, uh, community mode features which allow riders and non-riders, the public to contact us to respond. Uh, our average response time is dramatically lower than, than the 48 hours or even 24 hours in cities like Ottawa where we're required to respond within an hour. Our response times are much shorter averaging about 15 minutes. Um, there is a whole host of other things that go into managing the public right away. I proposed some, um, other options such as the digital preferred parking spots that we would basically create. Uh, and we do this in other cities. Um, and again, this, what I've talked about, the options I, I've sort of suggested in my presentation work in conjunction with that general street furniture zone permissive parking model. Um, the challenge with the 20, 30 or 40 of these corrals is the system was designed so that a rider would, the, if you think about some of the, the, the cities that have models like this for bike share, the challenge is, is A, do I know as a rider, is that corral going to have a scooter available for me to ride? It may or may not by the time I get there. When I'm going to my destination, now I have to think about, well, is there a corral at my destination? Cause if there isn't, I may not ride. I may take a car, uh, because of that friction or unpredictability. If I do get to my destination and there is a corral, what happens if it's full? I have to go somewhere else further away and then walk backwards. All of that friction tells me I'm simply going to avoid these scooters and I'll simply take a car. The reality is, is the model as proposed creates a whole host of unintended consequences. There are a number of options within that general street furniture zone parking model that every other Alberta municipality has. They have simply added supplementary parking options to that model. What's proposed here today takes that model completely off the table. It would be St. Albert doing something that, that nobody else is doing. And it has a bunch of unintended consequences, uh, I would suggest to you particularly under a model where you allow, the city allows an unlimited number of e-scooter companies in, to, to do business in your, uh, in, in your municipality with an unlimited number of scooters. So we don't know at any one time, how many companies are going to be operating with how many scooters? How many corrals under that model would be, would be ideal? It's almost, and how many are, are allowed per, per, per corral? Well, how many operators are there? How many scooters are there? It doesn't work with the model as it currently exists. Uh, I would suggest that you're probably best proceeding with the, the current model you have for parking, adding some, some suggested, maybe you want to add some parking corrals. Not make them mandatory like the note, notice of motion proposes, but add some supplementary ones in key areas of the city as a supplementary parking option. Uh, maybe some digital preferred parking that we can add and all other operators can add. But you make that work in conjunction with the street furniture zone, uh, parking permissibility, not exclusive.
I appreciate the response. I think you identified some of the, the complexities that you've identified. I mean, certainly in your hit, in your, um, involvement with implementing e-scooter programs across Canada. Uh, do you find that initially there's some unfamiliarity and there's some growing pains in the actual ridership and that eventually potentially in a longer use that people will actually, you know, like stop abandoning them. You know, I don't know how many, I don't think we had very many that were thrown in the river or wherever. But, um, I mean, do you find that that's usually what happens? There's some familiarity and some, and you know, better compliance once these things get implemented?
And through your chair, uh, to councillor. Yes. I, I, I often talk about there, when, when, when a city or town in Canada talks about potentially launching or launching a shared scooter program, there's a lot of excitement and rightfully so. And we're excited and residents are excited, cities excited. But then we get to the sort of what I call the, the trough of disillusionment. It's very short. Uh, you've introduced some new form of mobility to a city that people aren't used to seeing in the public right away, aren't used to riding. And so what we've noticed, and I see this in data from cities across Canada, municipalities across Canada, is that 311 complaints initially spike for a short period of time. People aren't used to this. It's new. We've barely frankly had it in St. Albert. It's so new. What we see over time is 311 complaints decline rapidly after initial increase upon launch and flattens out. Uh, people understand residents come to understand, hey, these scooters are allowed to be here. They're not questioning whether, why did this thing appear overnight? Um, they start to understand the rules. Of course, we take that responsibility, as do my colleagues in the industry very seriously. There's a whole bunch of in-app education, uh, that we provide in-person education at public events we host. They've been challenging to host in, in the public during COVID. But we do, um, and, and our safe street patrols, uniformed staff, talking to riders and educating them. We also take enforcement onto ourselves. So when that safe street patrols see people, um, riding or parking in ways that are not compliant, we educate them, but we also will suspend and ban riders that, uh, that are demonstrating egregious behavior. Um, and we take that responsibility seriously. But I do think in fairness to your question, uh, and I'll, and I'll wrap here. Is that we've had the shared e-scooter program so briefly in your municipality, um, that introducing a wholesale fundamental change in reorganization of the program as proposed by the notice of motion would create, A, the unintended consequences I spoke about, but also confusion amongst the public that's used to what was proposed and, and operated under last year for a short window is now under this notice of motion proposed to completely fundamentally altered and, and changed. Uh, I think you'd run into a whole host of, of educational challenges again. Um, I think the program. I think the program needs a little bit more time, and we see these things dramatically decline as a program matures.
Thank you very much. You're speaking to the unintended consequences king, so I appreciate that. I'll, I'll give up my time here.
All right, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. So with the bike share programs, are the people on the bike shares allowed to just drop off their bike wherever they feel like in front of someone's yard when they're done with it? Or do they have to return to a specific location?
Through you, Chair, thank you for the question, Counselor. So when you say bike share program, you didn't mention which ones. So I'll just assume maybe you're talking about Vancouver's bike share program?
Any of them. Do any of the bike share programs just say, drop off the bike wherever you feel like it, and we'll come pick it up?
Sure. I understand your question. So I'll start by saying no program. Micro mobility program says you can park, including St. Albert, under the last year's program, says you can park an e-scooter or micro mobility device anywhere you like. Now, there are rules in St. Albert. The rule is you return the scooter to the street furniture zone of the sidewalk. So there are rules in St. Albert that are consistent generally with other micro mobility programs across Canada. The bike share program that we will be launching this year in other Alberta municipalities will operate under the same model in St. Albert as they do in Calgary. You park the bicycle in the street furniture zone of the sidewalk. That is the model that is common. That is the model when we launched our bike share program in Alberta this year will follow. We did have our bike share program in conjunction with our e-scooter program in Windsor, Ontario. They operate, the bikes operate under the same premise. You are to deploy as a company, the e-bike and e-scooter to the permitted area, which is the street furniture zone of the sidewalk in Windsor, Ontario, under this example. Are e-bikes followed that same rule in Windsor?
A street furniture zone is defined by what for you? Because we have a lot of boulevards. So technically off the sidewalk and off of private property is still practically every road in St. Albert. So how do you define street furniture zone?
Through you, Mayor. So without pulling up a sort of technical definition, street furniture zone is, and it can vary by municipality. But generally, again, if I'm going generally across Canada, municipalities allow shared e-scooters to be parked in the street furniture zone of sidewalk, which means generally the area of the sidewalk that has park benches, light poles, newspaper boxes, areas of the sidewalk that do not prevent or do not impede a pedestrian walking down the sidewalk. That is generally what, what street furniture zone is, is known as.
So that would basically be every one of our boulevards? Because that's where we have light poles, boxes, bus stops. Those are, that's all of our boulevards.
Correct. So through your chair, again, without pulling up the specifics of, of a bylaw in your municipality, the street furniture zone parking model, particularly in municipalities that have a lot of it, is really ideal. Because, you know, you want to, as a program, administration of a program, rules that people follow, the simplest rules are the easiest to follow. So if I'm as an operator here, again, it can, you know, it's generally consistent across Canada, there's no differences here. If I can communicate to our riders via the app, via social media, via email, via a bunch of tools in person or otherwise, that you are to park, and they already find, they already locate the e-scooter in the street furniture zone of the sidewalk. So they, they retrieve it from that zone, if you like. If I just tell them simply, return it to that same area of, of the sidewalk and do not block the pedestrian thoroughfare when doing so, in a very simplistic way. Now, rules are often a little bit more complicated by saying how many meters here or there. But that general message, if I can deliver that and deliver it consistently, riders will come over time to understand that. And then we have, as I explained briefly, systems in place to deal with instances where someone doesn't quite hit the mark in terms of where they're parking the e-scooter.
Okay. We, I feel we could make the answer a little bit more brief just because it's getting late in the night, and I have a few more because I haven't had a chance to talk to you directly since we approved this.
Mayor, point of privilege.
I just need, there's a long answers, Counselor Jolly. I'm just asking if it could be brief.
I, I just, Mr. Schaefer is a guest, and I would really appreciate that he be, be treated as such here.
Misinterpreted what I said. So what I'm wondering is the preferred parking spots. How many of the, would you have the preferred parking spots? How, what's the percentage of the, the scooters that are parked in the preferred parking spots?
Through your chair, so the, to Counselor, great question. So right now in St. Albert, we don't have preferred parking spots. And those are, if you remember from my presentation for everyone here.
Other communities.
Oh, okay. So it depends really on, in municipality, there is no set limit to them. There is no minimum, there's no maximum. What we really do is we work with our city partners, so the administrators of the program, and our, bring our own knowledge to the table. Where the built form is particularly challenging, so our data as one example, our data internally is telling us that riders are having particular challenges parking at this particular area or areas of a municipality. That will tell us, and we've only had, we've only operated in St. Albert for a very brief amount of time, so there hasn't been that opportunity yet to gather that data. But if the data is telling us there's challenges in, you know, 10 areas, 12 areas, we can create preferred parking areas, incentivize them, so that we give a rider a credit on a future trip and provide information, say, hey, we see, basically the app will be, here's Chris coming along as a scooter. He wants to park it. The app will say, you're really close to a preferred parking area. We'd really prefer you to park here. If you do, this is, the area is pre-cleared, it's perfect for parking. You don't have to worry about blocking anything. We'll give you a credit if you go over there. So we could implement those in St. Albert. In doing so, would work in conjunction with the existing street furniture zone model you have. Counselor, with all due respect, what you've proposed, it doesn't work in conjunction with these things.
So what has been uptake? I'm going to repeat the question. In other communities that have done this, what is the uptake of what percentage of the scooters end up being parked in the preferred area then?
Through you, Chair, to, to, to Counselor, to your question. The preferred or the digital parking zones are supplementary to or in addition to the street furniture zone parking. So I don't have in front of me data that would say how many people, we, we, we do have data about this. I don't have it on my fingertips. How many people use those digital preferred parking spots in other cities? But they are not mandatory. They're in addition to the street furniture zone parking cities like Red, I'm sorry, St. Albert have already.
So you said that Ottawa has a one-hour response time expectation?
Through Mayor, to, to Chair, to your, to Counselor, correct. So generally, I'm speaking generally here. The cities in the agreements for e-scooter programs generally, generally have a one-hour response time. As, as an operator in cities like Ottawa, for example, you raised the example, it is one hour. We on average respond in about 15 minutes to, and, and, and an example would be a scooter parked in a location that's not permitted, maybe private property. So that is our response time, but the mandated response time in Ottawa is an hour.
So our mandated response time is 48 hours. So if we were to modify that to an hour, could you also meet it in our community?
Through your chair, to you, absolutely.
And so it appears when I look at the motion that your biggest problem appears to be the 20 drop-off pickup locations. So if we were just to amend it to say specified look pickup drop-off locations, so it's not going to be mandated to be a specific number, would that also work with you? Or you want to be able just to put them everywhere? And before you answer, let me just clarify that this, this motion is in response to public feedback. Now, I realize it was a short period of time, but the public feedback was that half the people do not want this program at all. And over 90% have mixed or do not want anything to do with this program to continue. So I'm trying to find a solution because St. Albert is a community that does not really like clutter. And seeing these scooters everywhere has been negatively responded to by many in the community. So saying I want to be able to put it wherever the street furniture is an issue because we see it everywhere. And that was becoming a lot of negative feedback. So I was trying to figure out a solution here to deal with this. It wasn't to try to shut you down. So I tried to figure a way that it would not have to stop at the end of this year. So I think the problem is how many locations are his that have the scooters and the general clutter of seeing them everywhere. In addition to the fact that people were having them dropped off in their boulevards or in their yard, and they didn't want them, and the response time is not, it was sometimes days. So I'm trying to find a solution here that will address the concerns of the public while recognizing that this is what you have. And I did not realize when this was approved that this was going to be the model that you used. For some reason, I just thought it would be one location, like a bike shop that rents bikes and would come back, or a car rental, or any other rental that has a specific location, and everything's returned within that period of time and not just dropped off randomly throughout the city. So with that, is your problem, if we were to take off the number and just say specific drop-off pickup locations, let the city deal with that? I never said there's a limit to how many had to be in each location. So the interpretation, there's only a limit per location, was never the situation. But if we were to remove that and say pickup and drop-off locations and turn around to have a one-hour response time? So hopefully that way the clutter of people having it in the wrong spot would be lessened. Would that work for you?
Through your chair, to Counselor, I know it would not work. I would suggest against that. I, I understand where you're coming from and what you're trying to, to achieve, and I respect that. But, but, but if I'm being honest, it won't work. So a couple of things, and, and your question sort of begets a larger discussion that, that really, I'm not sure we're designed to have. But the city, and we can debate whether this was a good decision or a bad decision, initially voted to have an open permit system. And that open permit system allows an unlimited number of companies with an unlimited number of e-scooters to enter your municipality and do business. It's not the model I encourage for municipalities in Alberta, but I respect the will of council. The challenge though with that, that's the model you got right now. It can change in the future, but that's, that's the model you operate under. That model brings an unlimited number of companies with an unlimited number of scooters. And then you're trying to graft on this model of a finite number of parking spots that nobody else uses in any other municipality in, in Alberta. It's going to still create a whole host of unintended consequences. I'll give you one. You, 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 you mentioned, Counselor, that, you know, I didn't specify, or you, you didn't specify how many scooters per parking corral. The reality is though, a parking corral is only so big. Usually it's, it's the size of a car parking spot on the road. That size generally, if I'm looking at other municipalities like Edmonton that has them. You can only, reality is you can only fit so many in. Now, what do you do when you've got an unlimited number of companies with an unlimited number of scooters? Everyone trying to deploy to the finite number of parking corrals, you can't fit them all in. And then you add more companies come, and then you add more scooters because it's an open permit system. It, it runs into a whole host of challenges. My recommendation with all due respect is keep the system the way it is. You've only operated under this for, for a bit. Consider reducing the response time from companies to, to one hour, as suggested, Counselor. That would be a productive motion, I think. But keep the parking system the way it is currently, which is street furniture zone parking. The municipality could consider adding some physical real-world parking spots in key areas of the city. They're not mandatory, they're in addition to the street furniture zone parking. And we as operators could add the digital preferred parking areas throughout the city. That would not be mandatory, but would be in addition to street furniture zone parking. That model is consistent with every other Alberta municipality.
Okay, so one more question. So in Edmonton, you referred to, they have, you're telling me that they have scooters all over, like all over the residential areas, by all the bus stops, it's not just in the River Valley. You've got these things everywhere throughout the city. Is that correct?
Through your chair, to you, Counselor, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than that. I'll, I'll be brief. So Edmonton's general rule, like St. Albert, is street furniture zone parking. That's the general rule. On top of that, they've added the, what we call designated or physical real-world parking infrastructure, the painted box with or without bollards. They've added those in key areas of the city. They're not mandatory for riders to use to park, but they're supplementary to. Then they've created other rules that exist again in other municipalities where they say, okay, we don't want scooters in certain areas of the city, so you need to create a no-park zone. That is a geo-fenced, doesn't exist in the real world. It's just a virtual barrier that we would make in conjunction with city partners that say, okay, we don't want scooters in this area of the city. A scooter would enter that zone, slow down safely, and stop. Digital, there's no physical infrastructure for that. And then they have other areas in the city that they've said, okay, you can't operate here, such as the, the River Valley. There's no scooters finished. So we, we make that as a no-ride, no-park zone. So in conjunction with the city, with, with St. Albert municipal partners here, if there are key areas in your municipality that the administrator of the program decided, you know, we really don't want to see scooters being ridden, ridden or parked here, we can create geo-fence, which are virtual boundaries that a scooter would slow down and, and maybe ride at a slower pace if you wanted to slow them down, or have them completely stop in an area and can't be used, or an area or areas where a scooter cannot be parked, cannot have their trip end. So a rider, if a rider took out their phone, smartphone at the end of a trip in a no-park zone, the app would tell them, sorry, you're in a no-park zone. Here's where you need to go to be able to park the scooter. So those are all things that other Alberta municipalities do. We can do in St. Albert too. But the beauty of that is it works in conjunction with the existing parking model you have for street furniture zone parking in St. Albert. As I mentioned before, your motion, the notice of motion, would, would take all of that off the table because it's a fundamental rewrite of the entire framework for shared e-scooters in, in your city.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I, I, I will just, just reiterate that we have 90% of the population that are coming back with a negative response. And I know that last fall, I was getting a lot of phone calls about the clutter. So of having them unused or having them just strung about. So that's why I was trying to figure out a solution. So Mayor, I'm going to amend the motion, which I'm trying to just do while he was speaking.
We haven't even got to the motion yet. We have two more, two more speakers wanting to.
I will do that while you ask this question.
And then we're going to take a break. This has gone on much longer than I thought it was going to be fast. So I'm going to go to Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question around your preferred parking program. So I take it that if, if they park in a preferred spot, they get a bonus of some sort? You know, 10 minutes free next ride or some? Can you also have a, a, a penalty clause? For example, if they're not parking in, if they just drop it in, in a non-park zone? Can, is, is there like, I don't know, because 2:00 in the morning, somebody's just drops it on somebody's yard and stuff like that. What's the penalty for something like that?
Through your chair to Counselor, it's a great question. So for example, there's a few examples here. We require riders, this is already in place, it's standard across municipalities. When a rider ends their trip and parks in the street furniture zone of the sidewalk, we require riders to take a picture of that parking job, if you like. We will analyze those photos. If a rider, now, of course, there's a degree of, of error. If they're in the street furniture zone clearly, great, bingo, you, you, job well done. If they're completely in the middle of the sidewalk, we will follow up with that rider. Generally, early on in a program, it's about education, saying, hey, we know it's new. You didn't quite hit the mark. We had a bunch of education in the apps, videos, and all of this to educate you. You didn't hit the mark. Here's some additional education. As the program, now, the program's very, very young in St. Albert. But as the program matures, we move from the education phase to the sort of, you know, from the carrot to, to, to the stick, if you like. And we will. And we will do a few things. We can financially penalize the rider through the app. We can also ban them. And when I ban them, we take their, basically, they can't create a new email. Their smartphone is banned. Now, the reality is in 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 your municipality, they just jump to the other e-scooter company. Um that's that's a challenge with the model you have in terms of unlimited number of operators, but we would suspend them. Uh from from service. If, for example, to the last part of your question. Is if a rider parked in, let's say we drew a geo-fence as a no park zone. It may be certain residential areas where you just don't want people parking because maybe the sidewalks are very narrow and there isn't. Street furniture zone. We could draw a no park zone in a residential area. If someone. Enters that zone and tries to end their trip. In that no park zone, the app would say, sorry, you can't do it. You need to go here to park uh properly. If they decided. You know, I don't care what the app says, I'm going to park here or abandon my scooter here. What that would do is send a signal to the backend, our backend technology, to the local operations team in your municipality. They would get notified on the backend system saying, we've got someone that has tried to park in a no park zone. They've abandoned their scooter. Our team then, that sort of straight uh safe streets team I told you about, would go into that no park zone, get the scooter. Within a timeframe. Now, if it's an hour, we'd be in there less than an hour. Uh we'd go in and collect that scooter. Then we would follow up with that rider and say, hey. You know, early days, it's education, but then we'd we'd go to enforcement mode where. Uh hey, you've done this for a second time or a third time rider. We are financially penalizing you. And or banning you from service. So that in a nutshell is how we handle um handle things.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Broadhead. Uh councillor Killig.
Uh thank you, uh Mr Schaefer. I've never rented a scooter, but I have ridden one. So. With with some of the abandoned scooters that we see. If I rent a scooter and drive down one of our trails. Um and the the brake automatically goes on. How does that, is it? Geo-fenced the on our trails? It's like, or? Or does the person's amount of money that they've rented it for run out? So that's why they get left often. You see two or three of them together. How how does that happen?
Through your chair, great question. So um if it's a no ride zone, for example, or slowdown zone. We we would have drawn an invisible geo-fence on our backend of the technology. The scooter is communicating. With satellites. Uh it also has its own brain, if you like. And it's uh got um other things deployed on its brain. It's communicating with satellites and our technology. It responds to that zone. So if the zone is telling the scooter. To slow down and come to a complete stop, it will do so safely and and that is. That is done because cities understandably want certain areas of the city not to have any e-scooters. Being ridden. So we then deploy that technology, a geo-fence, to prevent that. The reality, I think, if I can speak more broadly back to the point I made earlier, was that. The concern about e-scooter visual clutter, if you like. Exists, and I see this in time and time again, in cities that have. Unlimited number of scooter companies and unlimited size of fleets. That is a challenge you have to grapple with. Um that doesn't exist in other cities with smaller number of companies with a smaller number of fleet. Um but but with that said, it is the model that that you have currently. But to answer your question. It's not somebody not having enough money. It's the scooter responding to a geo-fence zone we've created. Either based on our own observation of what's needed in the municipality or a municipality saying. In order to operate here, bird candidate, you must have this zone drawn as a no ride zone. So the scooter would enter the zone. Communicate with the satellite, slow down and stop safely.
Okay, um so it's it's not a case of it running out of money and just. Being randomly left somewhere. The the other question I have is like for my house in front of, I have a nice boulevard, flower beds. Um a e-scooter user. Comes home, neighbor, leaves his scooter, leans it up against the light post. That's totally permitted. If I phone in and complain that it's been there for two days. Uh i- is it based on me phoning in and complaining? You know, because it's now fallen over and it's in my flower bed and or or does the app? Tell you that it's been sitting, even though it's in a in a permitted area. It looks like clutter, or eyesore. Um does the app tell you to come and pick it up or? Is it based on my complaint?
Through your chair, uh it's a great question councillor. So. Uh without looking specifically, I I deal with Canada, so there's, these rules can vary, you know, on the margins uh across Canada. So I won't give. I won't speak to specifics of of any rules in 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 St Albert, but I know because it's consistent across Canada. Is um the couple of things. We only make money as a for-profit company if people are riding our scooters. So we want them to be in places where people. Are either our data, our intelligence tells us a rider is more likely to 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 rent the scooter and ride. So our technology will tell us, for example, that scooters uh or a scooter. Is a parked in in a non-compliant area, but under your example was parked compliantly. After X amount of time, and in that that amount of time can vary depending on rules in a municipality. Uh that say you can't have a scooter sit idle for X amount of time. Those that can vary by municipality. Either way, either way, we have our technology. Kick a message to ours, uh to our backend tech uh backend systems to tell us. There's an idle scooter that sat there for X amount of time. It's not earning money, move it. Our our team would go in, pick up that scooter and return it. We're also constantly. Throughout the day rebalancing, because what we don't want, and I'm sure you can imagine. Is to have all our scooters deployed in one area. We don't do this. And and if even if we did and they were all rented and taken across town. Well, we know that there's going to be people over here that want to rent throughout the day, so we've got to rebalance them. So there's this constant. Rebalancing happening as well.
Okay, you're you're picking up scooters to recharge them in any case, right? So you're doing that on a twelve hour, twenty-four hour cycle?
Through your chair, it's on average every thirty-six hours.
Thirty thirty-six hours. Okay, now you you've been speaking on your own individual company's behalf. Some of these suggestions around a one hour pickup time, uh uh geo-fence. Area where you you could have a no-go zone, the the preferred parking. And and an app that would reward. Are those consistent across? Could could we work with all of the uh providers to have similar kinds of things? Is that a common? The things you've been speaking about, are they standard across providers?
Through you, a chair to councillor, yeah. I I know a lot of folks in this in in the industry myself, obviously. Uh and so yes, those things are common. So the digital preferred parking spots, to my knowledge. Uh other companies, because I've seen them in their apps, produce them. The geo-fencing is standard, so no-go. Uh sorry, a slowdown zone or no park zone or no ride zone, those are standard geo-fencing that companies have. The um the other things I've spoken about are common uh across the industry.
I taking a picture of where you've left it to so you know you haven't left it in somebody's flower, my wife's flower bed. Have versus leaning up against a telephone pole?
My understanding are is those things are are consistent across the industry.
Okay, and councillor Killig, I'm assuming at the end of the pilot, if these are things we wanted incorporated, we could make a condition of a business license.
And and I assume the, just final question, assume the preferred parking corral. Again, is is good for business because then people know where to go. To get a scooter to rent it, if if there's a corral of them being dropped off. I I assume that's good for you as well.
Through your chair, um to your councillor, I'll I'll just correct the verbiage. I wouldn't use corral because I might confuse it with the notice of motion, which is. Proposing, you know, sort of physical real world, uh twenty of them and only twenty. Um the the verbiage I've been using, and I think you meant to use is sort of digital preferred parking spots. Um common across the industry and also correct. Um it is helpful, again, because St Albert is such a a young program and we haven't had that much of an opportunity to actually operate yet. We haven't built in this stuff because that we haven't had enough opportunity to collect the data about telling us where. You know, you need a sufficient amount of data for a sufficient amount of time for us as a company to know, okay. These are common areas of the street furniture zone where people are parking. This is a common destination. Of enough riders to tell us that it's common. This is the data that's telling us, okay. This is particular areas of the city where riders are not hitting the parking, you know, not doing a good job. Again, all of that data comes in and then we internally, within the confines of the structures of the rules in St Albert as they exist. Will adjust by adding preferred parking spots that are already compliant with the street furniture zone, but will help assist the riders further. Um we start to do all of those things. It's just, it's so premature, I think, to fundamentally alter the program. By by adopting the notice of motion, um without giving enough time. For the program as envisioned to to operate. We we barely barely operated.
So la- last last question around, data is very valuable. You would know where scooters could be dropped off or aren't being. Used or whatever, but we have a a global. Um scenario of where all the suppliers, a knee scooter gets dropped off. It it looks like uh it's abandoned, irrespective of what company. So do the companies share or would they be willing to share the data that says? Wow, here's a real, here's a place where we collectively. Need a a drop-off area in in. Uh to supplement our street furniture parking area? Like, would you share the data so we? I don't want to just solve it for one vendor and have the problem be pop up again.
So uh to through your chair to to your question, so there's a a couple of things I'd say. So a lot of that data is proprietary. For example, if we knew. As a company that the data was telling us that a lot of people want to rent a a knee scooter here or or taking out their app and and and. And either looking for a scooter, like we will we'll track, again, not with um identifying information. But uh we'll know, for example, where riders are opening the app within the operating zone in St Albert. Uh there may or may not be a scooter available where they're opening the app physically. But we'll know that. So that's telling us something. That's telling us, okay, rider is looking for. An e-scooter trip, under the assumption that they're opening the app for that purpose. Then the data will tell us, okay, where in fact people are actually. Getting an e-scooter and actually physically commencing a trip and then when they're where they're ending that trip. All of that data we view as proprietary because, you know, for example, if we know. Everyone wants to rent a scooter at eight thirty-three AM on a Tuesday morning. On the first Tuesday of the month, I'm making it up, right here, and there's a hundred people that really want to do it then. I'm probably not going to pick up the phone and call my competitor to tell them that 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 piece of intel. Um so so that's a bit of the reality of of the challenge of a competitive marketplace.
I I was hoping for a different answer, but expecting exactly what you said. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I'm sorry this uh took so long to get to questions and or get to the presentation and and good questions. Um I'm going to call a twenty-two minute dinner break because. Been a while since we've been sitting in our chairs and our dinner is probably stone cold now, but uh. Um we'll be back in our chairs at seven o'clock and we'll um. I'll get councillor Hughes to read the motion into the record and we'll go into debate. Right? Done. Done. My video.
Can I ask communication support to mute themselves? We're getting some feedback.
Whoa, what's going on? Sorry, say that again.
Oh, thank you, Nicole.
We're good?
Yep. Just someone was unmuted.
Okay. All right. I still got white papers here. All right. Where were we? Counsel Hughes. Why don't you read your motion in and then we'll open up questions of administration? And then we'll accept it. Excuse me.
Sorry, I'm talking to the mute buttons. That's useful. Um, I had a couple of questions of administration. I, I sent you a revised motion, but I wanted to just check with administration before I present it. Um, so, hey, I'm Mike. Hey, how you doing? Okay. Um, so the rules in St. Albert for how long an item can be idle, is that, what is that? Is it forty-eight hours? Or how long can, uh, a knee scooter be idle in St. Albert?
Um, through the chair, yes, I believe forty-eight hours is the period in which, uh, um, uh, a knee scooter can be left, um, for, has to be removed and sort of brought back to, um, um, a proper location, furniture zone.
So, a, and within the furniture zone, is there any limit for how long they can be there without being used?
Um, through the chair, I, I, I'm not sure. I, I, I mean, I think, um, as Mr. Schaefer indicated earlier, um, you know, they're going to need to bring them back into their inventory to, to charge them. But we don't have anything within our, our business license regulations that would require them to be removed after, from a certain location after, uh, you know, if, if they're parked in a, in a proper location after a certain period of time.
We already issued business licenses for this year for all of the e-scooter companies that participated last year.
Through the chair, we have not.
Okay. Have, have any of them already done it or? Because I, the motion I, I said, I know I sent you just like two seconds ago and I apologize for that. I was trying to think about what to do. Um, is to limit to four companies. So would that be feasible at this moment?
Um, I, I guess I would answer the first part first and saying that my understanding is they've all reached out to us. Um, but we, we haven't approved anything. We wanted to keep everything sort of on hold until we had this discussion with council. Um, the second part is it feasible? Um, I, I, I believe so. I think we would have to come up with a process in terms of how to, how we would implement the, the limitation. Um, if, if we go back to when this was first brought in, we, we, we chose to go the way we did and I, I know, uh, Mr. Schaefer took issue with it. Um, but we, we decided to not go to a, a sole provider. We chose not to go to an RFP process. And part of that was to make sure that we could implement this program in time. We, we implemented it in about six weeks. We felt that by going to an RFP, that would sort of slow down or delay the process. Um, I think we were in a different situation currently, so we, we may be able to, um, change our process and go back to, uh, to a full RFP. Um, or we could look at a different scenario where we could, we could come up with some criteria as to how we would, we would limit to four, first come, first served or, or other options.
Okay. Like, I'm just thinking you could do a lottery. Just everybody wants and tells you by a certain date, and you pick four and those are the four that, because a lot of the, I'll meet the requirements, those are the four. Which is just, so, um, one of the, part of the motion is to have the response time reduced from forty-eight hours to one hour. Um, and so I'm wondering right now with the forty-eight hours, if they are complicit, like that said, they don't pick it up within forty-eight hours. Um, is there a fine or what are the consequences to that company for not meeting the deadline?
Um, I might, I might ask, um, I might, I might ask manager Sean McCauley, if he's on the call, I'm not sure if he knows that exact regulation and how we've got that set up. But I believe my understanding is we sort of have a similar process and that we would contact them first and then we could rescind their business license if they weren't complying.
Thanks, Mike. And through the chair, you're correct, we do have the authority within the business licensing to revoke their license if they're not compliant within the 48 hour, which is the current standard.
Did that answer your questions, Counselor Hughes?
Don't ask me what happened there, the button just went on the mute. My computer has a gremlin, I suppose. My question is, so there's no fines, there's nothing that's a financial disascendive, they have to, it's like one extreme of letting them continue to the other, which is pulling their business license, right? There's nothing in between right now? Would there be any, would you require council motion to say we need fines or would that be something that you would consider or not at all?
Correct, so there is no financial fine at the moment, it would just be, you know, at their risk of losing the license and not being able to operate. It is something that can be considered within the, sorry, the guidelines of the business licensing.
Do I need to have that in the motion or I don't want to have it prescribed if it's too difficult to be able to manage it, but at the same time, there appears to be no consequences to actually not doing it. So do you need it in the motion or would you rather have the flexibility of trying to figure this out on your own?
Through the chair, I might look for a suggestion from Legislative Services. I believe when this was first introduced, I don't know that council necessarily approved all of the regulations within the business license bylaw, but I think they directed administration to implement certain regulations that had been presented to council at the time. So I'm not sure if we need to be specific or administration can just be directed to make certain improvements to the business license bylaw.
And then the last question I had was, let's say that some, someone's left it, whether it's on the boulevard or it's not, some, somebody's on a bike or something, it's night and they hit it and they go flying and they get severely injured. Who's liable? Are we liable because we're letting them park it anywhere in their, what, I don't remember, the furniture zone? Or are they liable because they have a product there that's created a hazard?
Through the chair to council, that's one scenario that I know I haven't researched or looked into, so my apologies. Definitely something that I can get, get information for you though and bring back to council.
Shaun, that's not really relevant to the, to the motion that was presented, so that's okay if you don't have it. So Counselor Hughes, if you really want that. I don't know if we need it.
No, I don't, I'll do this information, Chris Mayor. So, so I guess, can you just look at the motion that I have sent, I'm looking to you, Mike and Shaun, and tell me if there's any problems with it right now.
Which motion are you referring to?
I just sent it 10 minutes, 15 minutes ago, because I was going to. I sent it to council and to.
Haven't seen it.
Okay, so.
Mayor, I did send it to Mike and, and the DCAO and the CAO and also the CLO. So it is with Mike Erickson right now. Okay.
So I did send it to council, you were at supper, I'm not expecting you to, you know, have superpowers. But what the wording of it is, is that the, I'm just making it bigger, it's not coming properly, that the e-scooter program is amended to add further designated parking zones and no park zones, reduce the mandatory response time from 48 hours to one hour and limit the pilot to no more than four e-scooter companies for 2022. So, I just wanted your opinion about if that's feasible to do, because I don't want to put something on there that you can't do. And I realize that you don't necessarily know the parking zones right now, so there would be some working it through. But I'm trying to figure out some kind of solution here.
Through the chair, I think that's a difficult question to answer right at this moment. I mean, I'm reading through it here as we speak on the fly. I think we need, probably need some clarification around no park zones, some of the details within here, but I think the the larger question that I have is, is are we prepared at this point or is the intention to make these significant changes to the program at this time? Or is the intention to sort of carry on with the pilot as was, was approved and put forward last year and only had sort of six weeks to implement, because I think what you proposed here are fairly significant changes and I would say that what Mr. Schaefer put forward in terms of the, maybe the unintended consequences, I don't know that we fully assess that at this point based on receiving this just in the past minute or so.
I mean, we can, I realize that we've had a very long question period up to this point, but Mayor, I'm willing to bring this forward and have it discussed the next meeting because it's two weeks away instead. And give administration time to pursue it. I guess the only thing I have, Mike, is that the way the current pilot is working for many people in St. Albert is not working.
Okay, I'm just, don't forget, that was a very small sample point and as Mr. Schaefer added at the beginning, when these things are introduced into municipality, there's some excitement and then there's some loss of the honeymoon stage and you get, so what Mr. Erickson was saying is not that he's not prepared to say yes or no to it, he's saying, let's let the pilot finish out and then we'll know. So, I'm willing to vote, because your amended motion, especially the part around the parking areas is relevant, but maybe the response time is completely irrelevant to what you originally, so not irrelevant, immaterial, like different from what you originally proposed, so.
I'm willing to do this now or later, Mayor.
I think we just need to get this voted on and move on.
Fine. Okay, so I'll just read it in then if you like, if there's no other questions.
I think I see no more questions, so we're good.
Okay, that the e-scooter program is amended to add preferred and designated parking zones and no park zones, reduce mandatory response time from 48 hours to one hour and limit the, sorry, I should say mandatory response time for pickups from 48 hours to one hour and limit the pilots to no more than four e-scooter companies for 2022.
Okay, I am going to split the first part of that on parking zones and I'm going to say that the second part about the pickup times and the number of companies is immaterial and we're not ready to vote on that. So we're splitting that out.
Sure.
Are we good?
Sure, it's your call, so, yep.
Okay, so, the part about the preferential zones, so.
Send it, if you have your email, but it's to amend to add preferential and designated parking zones.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so the e-scooter program is amended to add preferred and designated parking zones and no park zones, period. And so Counselor Hughes, just for confirmation, you're referring to what Mr. Schaefer had been talking about, okay.
Yes, that exactly.
Yeah, so let's.
Madam Mayor, it just needs that piece that needs to be split, isn't being split out yet.
Yeah, we're putting a period after no park zones and then we're taking the rest out.
I would just say that I'm not sure if this will make it more difficult for the, for kind of development in the e-scooter companies, because if we're voting on the rest later, they don't even know how businesses, licenses are issuing until this comes to a vote. So, just saying.
Sorry, say that again, Counselor Hughes?
If we, if we'd only vote on the first portion of the motion and the rest of it is voted on later, the business department doesn't know how many business licenses are issuing for the e-scooter companies until it's voted on later. So they're, they can't actually go a complete response until they know how many e-scooter companies we're allowing.
They know how many, their current is just as many as you want, there's nothing changing that until we vote on it.
I know, and so I'm saying if you're not voting on the other, are we voting on the other two separately? Are you splitting it or are we voting on a different night? Because I got the impression it's a different night.
I am saying that the second party motion is not material to what was presented to council and so it's a notice of motion.
Okay, so it's going to make it harder.
Motion only, you've talked about where you could park the scooters. Your second part is something that you're dictating to the scooter company and the number, that's completely different. And I need, I think all of us need a background on that.
Okay.
All right. So no, so it's motion on the floor is that the e-scooter program is amended to add preferred and designated parking zones and no park zones. So, a nice, so now Counselor Jolly has a question before I accept that.
Yeah, just briefly, so when we last discussed this at committee, administration advised that any changes to the program would require quite significant internal resources to kind of turn around. Has that changed since that time?
Through the chair, no.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, seeing no more questions, I'm going to accept your motion, Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Okay, so, this has been a long night. I understand that this will be a lot of work. I understand that you probably are going to have to, looking at Mike right now. There will be some kind of figuring it out. I haven't said how many have been preferred designated, it can be just the obvious ones that we think are clear, classic locations. And if there's areas that become issues, that we create no park zones, simple as that. If we're hearing complaints in neighborhoods, that's where the no park zones would be going and then we reflect it accordingly across the city that way. But when we approve this, unintended consequences where I did not realize there was going to be scooters everywhere. I did not know that people were parking everywhere. I had not realized that they had 48 hours to respond and if they didn't, there wasn't really a penalty. So, there is a lot of issues that are pilot program as it stands. And if it were to continue like this indefinitely, I personally would not be supporting it. So I'm trying to figure out some way to actually give it a fair shot. So that way it has regulations that are being used in other municipalities that are successful incorporating these into their community. One of them is this preferred and parking zones and the no park zones. So I think that that will hopefully reduce the amount of clutter that we're seeing and have it where it's a predictable location where they can pick it up and not, and hopefully that'll be enough. I personally want it to go a lot further than that and have it be where it is start and stop, but I'm trying to work with what we heard tonight to see if, if we can do that. But I'm not saying it has to be a specific number and it can be added to as the season progresses as well. I'm not saying everything has to be done in the next 48 hours, Mike and Shaun. I'm saying we work with it as we go and modify it so that we hopefully would have a successful program by the end of the season. That's it.
All right, any more people jumping in? Counselor Mackay?
Not jumping in, I appreciate the intent behind the concerns, because I mean, obviously, you know, you start up a pilot project, something that's not familiar with most of the residents, although they're familiar with e-scooters and many of them have e-scooters as, I mean, as I learned, I mean, some of these e-scooters are quite powerful machines and are quite popular in our community. So, I mean, I, even during the pilot project, as I was out on the trails, I was looking at the number of scooters that were actually privately owned, so I mean, that was actually news to me, but I'm not going to support this at this time, because I'm going to take administration's perspective that right now we're in a pilot project and this project just started in September of last year and it really only got a chance to operate and we're really in the kind of early learning phase and I think all of our residents and users are there and it's clearly from even a little bit of data that we got that it seems to be extremely popular. I mean, if you look at the, at the background report that we got at committee, you have 6,247 unique users for 11,921 trips. So I mean, it's clear that they're popular and because of their popularity, there's going to be infractions and there's going to be some challenges around leaving your scooter in areas that it shouldn't be. But I think that's a learned activity and it's also a learned activity for our, for our administration and how do we deal with it? It also reported in that background report that we received, our municipal enforcement department did not receive or respond to any complaints regarding bylaw infractions related to e-scooters, so most of any inquiries were just about, you know, already identifying that these scooters were misparked and that that was appropriately responded to, maybe not within the adequate 48 hours and maybe there's opportunity when this pilot project is finished to implement some of the changes that we heard from Mr. Schaefer with like limiting the number of companies, limiting the number of scooters, limiting where they can access, because we will learn from our data and their data where some of our geo-fencing didn't work or some of those other areas where they didn't work. Feedback that I got was substantial and actually it was very positive. It was wondering about why did it take so long for our community to actually adopt the program? And actually, there was a lot of individuals who identified that these scooters were basically capped at 15 kilometers an hour where the ones in Emerson actually are, allow, are governed speeds at 20 kilometers an hour. So our scooters weren't actually going fast enough. So, I mean, I mean, you know, we all heard about the fact that there's no helmets, we heard about, we've seen the clutter, but I think that's part of the initial growing pains of a pilot project. And I think it's just too early at this stage to kind of take some of what we saw in the first couple of weeks of this pilot project, I don't even know if it was six weeks, but it might have been. And let's, let's see how it works over a year and then we actually, we can get it right. Rather than piecemealing it again, like I said on other matters tonight, let's, let's work with our administration, let's work with the market, let's work with our residents and let's actually determine what works best for our community. And I don't think we have the data yet to be able to make that determination, so I appreciate, I appreciate the concern and I appreciate the attempt to modify it. But at this time, I've just, I want to see if the project can actually resolve some of those concerns on its own. And, and I think we owe it to what we agreed upon during the pilot phase. So I mean, those are my comments, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, I don't know which one, have you put your hand up first, but Counselor Bremanski and then Counselor Jolly?
It was Counselor Jolly first, if you'd like to go.
Go ahead, Counselor Jolly.
Sure, you know, as was discussed at the standing committee meeting a month ago, I have significant concerns about e-scooters on St. Albert trails and sidewalks. But ultimately, I support the unanimous recommendation of the standing committee and the decision of council to proceed with the pilot program. As this motion effectively cancels the pilot and makes our, our data, you know, muddied while adding work for administration that is already busy. I just, I can't support this proposal. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Bremanski?
I've decided to support this proposal and simply it was because the, the information that was provided this evening that they did have the access to the digital parking application. So to me, if that's a responsible part of the product, so if the company had that with the scooters from the get-go, we would have had the data and they would have had better control of their, their, you know, units. So, by saying they could implement this now after the fact would be what they should have done in the beginning. So this new direction would allow them to keep better track of their vehicles going forward, so I will support the motion.
Counselor Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Geez, great comments all the way around. I too would love to see the pilot end up the way, just we need to get all that data, but quite honestly, I don't think this is that big of an ask. Add preferred and designated parking and no park zones. Didn't seem to bother the proponent to add these things in. They would be the ones doing it, doing the work. I think this is a good ad. Thanks.
All right, Counselor Hughes to close.
Thank you. Let me just read the motion that administrative, that we approved, or last council approved. That administration have built specialized conditions of business licenses issued to e-scooter businesses to regulate licenses and support the implementation of an e-scooter pilot project concluded at the end of 2022. We didn't provide any specifics, no details there, and this was rushed to market and that's really the problem. Said it was rushed to market the last council and because we were trying to get it rushed to market, we didn't put in the proper regulations that would allow it to be done more successfully. We didn't follow the best practices of other communities because we were trying to get this to the market as quickly as possible. So convenience and speed took over safety and the proper regulations and limitations. So we did not say anything. The last council said nothing about what should and should not be involved, just go ahead and do it. And so we got a report back. I don't know why we get a report back that tells us there's problems and then tells us there's no time. And then tells us there's no time to respond to them. So I was, I'm not a member of that committee. I would have put forward these motions at that time if I was, couldn't do it. Did it when I could, got notice of motion, and here we are. And now I'm being told it's too late. The reality is that the details that I'm suggesting here are what the other communities who have been successful have put in as their standards. So saying that we should have specific locations, telling us they have the apps. And having the gentleman come and talk to us for over an hour and saying, these are regulations that he would be willing to work with. Is an indication, this is really a compromise that's expected in other communities. And for us to say, we're going to continue to allow something where we have too many scooters in the market. That they're sitting around, that we have no locations where they're supposed to be dropped off and picked up. Because we don't want the pilot to be interrupted. When it's clear the pilot needs more confines to be successful from the community's point of view. I don't think that we're actually giving the pilot a fair shot. I don't want to say we're going to do a pilot for a year. And then at the end of this year and a half period, say, well, here's all the same problems that we identified in March. But we chose not to do anything. And then we have to decide that time, are we continuing as a permanent program? Or are we ending it without actually trying the modifications that may make this successful? The whole purpose of a pilot is to see how it works and to fine tune it to see if you want to continue. And that is what the motions include the ones that I'm hoping to bring forward later, if this is successful. Allow to do is to follow the regulations that had we not rushed this to market would have been implemented last year. And would resolve a lot of the issues that people are having. The e-scooter companies may be saying there's growing pains and people will get used to it. But the public is not saying that. And that's what I'm basing it on is public feedback, not on the company that wants everything to stay the same or to their convenience. Rather the standards that we have in our community. That the people are expecting us to uphold and respond to when we have the opportunity, which is to do it before the second season of the pilot moves forward. So I'm just, I'm asking anyone who's actually thinking about saying, no, just to reconsider this. This is just about putting them in. I didn't say how many. This is about just trying to put them into a location that's less of a hindrance to the rest of the public. And it can evolve as it goes forward. And then we can make a decision saying, now that we need the changes, do we still want to keep this going or not? But to continue knowing that there's huge gaps between what we expect and what other communities are doing. And to continue without filling in those gaps is really irresponsible. So. And delaying this other motion by two is going to make it harder on both economic development and the scooter companies. But regardless, at least to this first thing, we could have two or three. You don't have to have a 10. To just start things off and say, this is where you want to go. The e-scooter companies that came said that this is something we're going to do. And really, it's like, do we want this to be successful or not? Because right now we're just gearing up for chaos for another six months and then saying, you'll get used to it. And I'm hoping that we deserve to give our residents more than that. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Sorry, she was already closing, Counsel Kielak. Sorry, it took me a while. I was on the fence. So that motion passes with, sorry, Counsel Brumansky, Broadhead, Hughes, and Kielak in favor. Okay, we're out to Counsel Broadhead's. Motion about digital signs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So. I'm not sure I need to bring the, the motion forward, quite honestly. I'll, I'll just point out a particular line in the, in the administrative background. Or administration would recommend that the motion be amended to request consideration of an additional. Of an addition regarding digital displays in the PS district. So my question to administration is. If this work is going to be done and there's a, at least an option to debate that. With the land use bylaw update or the review. We can just carry on. I don't need to make the motion. But if it, if the land use bylaw review is not going to consider this as an option, then I will make the motion.
Okay, I think Mr. Slats here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Counsel Broadhead. So. The intent of, of, of this is for administration to review. The merits of digital display for the PS district. As part of the overall land use bylaw review as indicated within the report. And that is anticipate, pardon me, is anticipated to come back to council around the end of 2022 here. So. Yes, there would be an opportunity at that point to discuss the merits and it would enable administration to. Engage in consultation as part of the overall LUV rather than as a standalone from the overall LUV. To gain feedback from residents and industry, et cetera, on, on the merits of that proposal.
Well, based on that, Madam Mayor, I, I don't believe I need to. Present the motion. Administration is doing the work anyway. And if I'm, if I heard you correctly. Part of that is you'll, you'll give us an option to debate it as council. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Counsel Broadhead.
Well then, Madam Mayor, I'll withdraw my motion.
You never put it on the floor, so I'm good with that. Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. All right. We're to, information request. I do know that there's two IRs, one from Counsel Jolly, one for Counsel Brumansky. So Counsel Jolly, go ahead.
I'll withdraw mine. Thank you.
Your IR. Okay, and then Counsel Brumansky, you had an IR as well? I think you need to unmute.
Is administration still there to put it on my screen or not? Because she put it on up quite some time ago. So I have to, okay, I found it. It's okay. Okay, what is the yearly cost to the city for strategic guidance from Kathy Kiss in, as, as a member or separately of Canadian Strategy Group?
All right, thank you for that. And that, is any additional IRs? Notice the motions? I don't know.
Mayor, just the second part of that motion, I'll give his notice. And if it's possible, if we could do it in two weeks' time. Unless, and if it means says they can, it's all fair to the companies, I'll wait longer. But I, I would prefer if we could make the decision. So that the e-scooter companies know how many are going to be working in St. Albert, send them later.
Okay. Okay, we can talk about that agenda committee. I'll talk, I'll talk to Carrie about that as well. We are now at 14 in our agenda packages. There's in camera for 14.1. Need a motion to go on camera. Counsel Mackay, go ahead.
That council moving camera to discuss the matter pursuant to section 21.1(c)(3) of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, we will reconvene in the lounge.